Welcome to the Village of Pleasantville Board Meeting of August 10, 2009. So if you're watching today, August 10, 2009, we invite you to call in if you have questions or comments at any time during the meeting. The phone number is 769-1677. And we invite your comments if any matter comes up you'd like to weigh in on. Be reminded that you can be watching this both on Cablevision on the government channel, but also live through web streaming at the PCTV website, which is PCTV76.org. And as we have in the past, I just want to remind you, it's a worthwhile trip to find your way over to PCTV76.org, not only because you have the option of live web streaming of our village board meetings, but there's lots of other content, both government, school district, and PCTV content that's available on demand at the PCTV website. So that's a great resource, and it means that you can watch the goings-on at the village board wherever you are, from your hotel room in Hong Kong, or whatever. You're never out of touch. So our next regular meeting is Monday, August 24 at 8:00 p.m., with a work session at 7:00 p.m. I had a couple of things I wanted to say at the outset, and then we'll move into the discussion of the evening, which is a discussion about the traffic study that has been done on Church Street and the request for sidewalks in that area. But a couple of announcements, one of which is, I want to remind everybody that on August 29, the Lions Club will be holding their Second Annual Horseshoe Tournament at Roselle Park. And it was a great event last year, and I wholeheartedly recommend anybody who's interested in signing up to be in touch with the co-chairman, who is Rob Billman, at 769-0144. So it's a fundraising event on August 29 at Roselle Park, the Lions Club Horseshoe Tournament. Did anyone else have any announcements to make? The farm market continues on Saturdays in the mornings till 1:00 p.m. It's been a great success, and we encourage you to go. As I promised I would, I will give you a brief report about the ongoing discussions with Verizon and the effort to get a contract with them for Fios. As I think I mentioned the last time, Jonathan Cunningham and I and Patty Dwyer met with Verizon and their attorney about a month ago, and they presented what they asserted was their final offer. It addressed a number of our concerns and also created a couple of concerns we hadn't had before. In the intervening month, there has been some back and forth about some technical matters that they had raised an issue about, and it appears that at least that piece of the argument has been resolved. So what we're expecting at the moment is that Verizon's attorney is going to be putting together a document that describes for us, in its entirety, the terms they propose. We're aware of the monetary terms, and we're aware of the technical terms, but they have allowed, let us know that they have a number of other requirements, including the fact that they'd be exempted in its entirety from, I believe it's Chapter 79 of the Village Code, which covers cable TV companies. So there is a backstory to why they feel that way, but we've asked them to put together the document so that we can review the offer in its entirety, and then, of course, we'll have council look at the question of the implications of the exemption they request. So the short version of a long story is that we creep along. It has been an extremely frustrating process, hard to get timely response, hard to get what seems at some points like a reasonable response, but I do think that all eyes are focused on it, and I would cautiously say that we've seen some progress, and hopefully we'll see this document in the next couple of weeks, in which case we'll be making serious progress. So we remain committed to getting Fios in this community. I think having a choice for cable TV is an important thing. But I will say, speaking for myself, and I think on behalf of the others who've been involved in negotiation, it has been a frustrating and difficult process that has felt at times like an effort to negotiate with bureaucracy that can't come to a quick response. So that's the report on Verizon, and hopefully in two weeks I may have something even more positive to report. The main subject of our early part of the meeting tonight is to discuss the Church Street Sidewalk Project for the benefit of those watching who may not have followed the whole story. Back in the winter, a group of residents from the Church Street, Robbins Road, and Place Neighborhood approached us, as had happened about six or seven years ago, and expressed a desire to have sidewalks along Church Street in order to create a better pedestrian environment for people to walk down to Broadway. That has been a matter that has been discussed at various points in the past. There are some topographical difficulties attached to it. There are some other kinds of impediments, and in the course of the discussion, it has become clear that there are plenty of people who are interested in this, and there are also plenty of people who are opposed to it, each for their own sets of reasons, which I think are pretty clearly, at this point, described in the record. So the board hired Adler Consulting, which is a traffic engineering firm, to take a look at the conditions on Church Street and to come back to us with a report on the conditions there, with a specific question of whether it would be possible, safe, reasonable, whatever, to establish a crosswalk in the vicinity of Robbins Road. A number of people have pointed out that if a sidewalk or path were to be constructed, it may be that the north side is more hospitable to that purpose than the south because of the topography. And then the question is, how would somebody who's on Robbins get across Church Street in order to access the sidewalk? So that was a matter that we hired Adler Consulting to take a look at, and they have provided us with a draft report, as well as backup data that came from traffic counts, both traffic counts done by machine counters in the street and also direct observation. And tonight, we have Bernie Adler here from Adler Consulting, who I hope I can ask to give a brief description of the work you did and the findings you have presented to us in the draft report. And then I know the board members who have looked at this have a few questions and inquiries about the study and its implications, and I'm sure the audience does as well. So if we can invite you to the microphone, we'd be pleased to hear.
Good evening, members of the board, and the board trustees, and the public. My name is Bernie Adler. I'm the principal of the firm Adler Consulting. I thought I'd give a little background into my experience and where I came from, just to let you know that the work that we do does not come just offhand and on the back of an envelope. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of New York. I'm the past commissioner of traffic for the city of White Plains. I'm the past president of the Metropolitan Section of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the professional society of the transportation professional. I'm also a past member of the International Board of Direction. I've also served as an adjunct professor of civil engineering at Manhattan College, where I taught transportation planning and traffic engineering. Again, that's an extensive background, but I wanted you to know that I've been in this business for 40 some odd years, and we take this very seriously and professionally, and we don't treat any subject lightly. Our mandate, as the mayor had said, was to look at Church Street from the town line to Broadway and to look at issues concerning safety and to suggest whether or not there are very deep safety issues, or not as deep, or lighter, and whether or not some type of provision can be made to improve the safety if the safety is wanting. And lastly, to look at a possible crossing of Church Street in the vicinity of Robbins. And what we did was to collect a lot of data. We installed a machine, an automatic traffic recorder, which records traffic volumes as well as speeds on a 24/7 basis. We left it out for a full week to get weekday as well as weekend information. We manually collected pedestrian volumes at the intersection of Robbins and Church so that we could determine whether or not that intersection, in terms of attorney movements, has the force of concern with respect to volume and safety as well. We observed traffic volumes for two time periods, the school time period in the morning and the afternoon, consisting of 7 to 9 and 2:30 to 4:30. We collected accident data from the Pleasantville Police Department to look at a three-year summary or a three-year total, which is the standard that traffic engineers use, traffic engineers use, in terms of determining whether or not there are issues with respect to safety. We measured site distance along Church as well as coming out of Robbins, for example. We measured the width of Church Street at a number of points, all the way between the boundaries, between Broadway and the village line, the town line, near Robbins, just past And with all that information, I guess I could go, I'd like to go through some of the details and try to give you some of the implications and what we read from the information. The machine, the automatic traffic recorder, what we lovingly call LTR, determined that the volume is around 6,000 cars a day. The weekday volume is around 6,000. 6,000 cars represents a nominal volume for a collector road, which is not exorbitantly high. It's not very low. It's significant enough that concerns should be raised in terms of operations. If the volumes were half that amount, you might find that traffic operations would be a lot easier, safety concerns would be a lot simpler. We measured vehicle speeds. The tradition of the traffic engineer is to use a number called the 85th percentile speed. That's the speed below which 85% of people are driving. That's what we call our operating speed. That's the speed we use to determine whether or not there's a site distance concern, whether or not speeding is in effect. And what we found was that the eastbound direction, the speed was, while the speed limit is 30 miles an hour, the speed of travel, the 85th percentile, speed was 40 miles an hour, and the westbound direction, it was 37. These are elevated. I would like to see them, in general, around the 35 mile per hour range at most, the 85th percentile, which would be more typical of a lighter traveled, of motorists more respecting the road.
Can I ask, is the 85th percentile almost always above the speed limit?
Generally.
Right.
Generally. Speed limits are set by boards like yourself and states. The 85th percentile is really a technical term that traffic engineers use. Traditionally, traffic engineers would say, the 85th percentile is such and such a speed, and they would provide that to a board, or the state, or county, and that would be the speed that the county would set. But most of the time, counties, boards, villages, states, et cetera, determine that the speed limit should be what they set that, what they determine it to be. We counted pedestrians. We watched people walking all day long through the timeframes, and what we found was that there were 15 people through both time periods that were walking either across Church Street or Church Street in the westbound direction towards Broadway, or vice versa. Predominantly, we found that the direction of travel was the westbound flow towards Broadway. We also found that the predominant, although not everybody predominant, flow was along the north side. In fact, there's a lot of, almost trails, that you can see along the grass where people walk. So, and I guess the bottom line on pedestrians is, it's a likely traveled road. That could be because people perceive it to be dangerous, and they don't want to be out there. It could be that if you were to provide other amenities, such as sidewalks, et cetera, there'd be a latent demand, there'd be people who really wanted to be out there but chose not to be out there, and it's also possible that this is just the pedestrian volume on the road. We measured the cartway width. That's the curb-to-curb, edge-to-edge, really the grass, edge-to-grass, edge of the road, and Church Street is 24 feet wide. 24 is on the narrow side for a collector road, which is what the Church Street is. Usually, we define a travel lane as about 12 feet. If you have two 12-foot lanes, that occupies 24 feet. If somebody were to park or stop, or even walk along one of the edges, it does impede the flow. It will cause the motorists to either go over the center of the road or to avoid the motorists, or to avoid the pedestrian to go slow and wait until he found the right opportunity. So in general, we found that it is a relatively narrow cartway. Traditionally, I would like to see, I'd like to see it more in the 27-foot range. 30 feet would be a design guideline, that I'd like to see that, but in general, that's a luxury that we rarely get. We measured site distance. What we found is that the site distances go up and down. Church Street is, has horizontal curves and has vertical curves. There are shrubs. The determination of site distance, or the numbers that we found, was that it ranged from 230 feet to a maximum of 280 feet. The site distance, the safe stopping site distance, which is the distance that you need in order to come to a safe stop, if you're traveling at 30 miles an hour, is 200 feet. If you're traveling at 40 miles an hour, which is about where the people are traveling, you need 300 feet. We don't have 300 feet. We don't have 300 feet universally, and there are parts where, for example, at Robbins, and you're coming down the hill, and the curvature is just such that you do have 280 feet, the 37 mile per hour speed is sufficient.
But at the edge of sufficient.
I'm sorry.
But at the edge of...
At the edge. Well, you know, if it's sufficient, it's sufficient. If you determined that you have enough site distance, if 280 feet is all you need, 290 feet doesn't imply anything. So you've satisfied the site distance requirement.
So these standards build in whatever is considered to be a reasonable margin for error? Big car, small car, good brakes, bad brakes?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And that's based on typical vehicles, deceleration rates, braking, et cetera.
And that's IT data?
Yeah, ASHTO standard, IT standard, yes.
So in other words, it's traffic engineer standards?
Yes.
And it doesn't vary from state to state?
No.
Or municipality?
Nope.
It's generic for...
It comes from the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. It is what all states know, or all states use. The determination of the speed limit, of the travel speed, which, as I said, is traditionally the 85th percentile speed, and the amount of time it takes to be able to stop a vehicle once you see somebody. We did a safety survey. We looked at the accident data, and basically what we found was that over a three-year period, now this is only the three-year period that we had, I don't have information about anything before March of 2006 and everything, or anything after February 2009, but in that three-year period, there were a total of five accidents. The five accidents were all vehicle-related. No pedestrians were involved in accidents, in any of the accidents. They were all just property damage accidents. None of them were a personal injury. It's well below any standard for a fix. For example, if you had five accidents in one year, you might say, let's put up a traffic signal, let's put up a traffic light. Or if there was some relationship between the type of accident and the location, be it site distance or road curvature, that might tend to imply this is what you would want to do at a location. There's some interrelatedness between the type of accident and the geometry of the roadway, and that was not found. So basically, it's, I don't want to say five accidents is light. You don't want any accidents to occur, but it's well within the range of traditional numbers. That's basically all the data. We also looked at standards. As Trustee Wolf has asked, whether we use IT standards, or ASHTO standards, or New York State DOT standards. We do, and we looked at them all. And there really is no standard for when a sidewalk should be at a location and when it shouldn't be. It's really left up to the local municipality, the village, the town, the city, or whatever. It's predominantly, as we call it in engineering judgment, and relegated as such, so that the engineer would look at all the conditions, and we've collected a lot of data. It's a very significant study, and it's a very important study, so we really did not just cut short and say, let's not bother looking at something. I think we've looked at everything that we could. But based on the data, predominantly because it's a narrow cartway, predominantly because we have horizontal and vertical curvature, it is a better operation, and I'm using these words carefully because it's, I will explain in a few seconds, that a sidewalk be implemented, and our recommendation would be on the north side. It's not unsafe. There are, the accident picture doesn't say it. The site distances are marginal, but not critically marginal. One location where site distance is poor is when you're coming out of Robbins and you're facing the intersection of Church Street. The shrubbery on the southwest corner is slightly overgrown, is overgrown. That should be cut back so that you can have a clear triangle of site distance where the object height, where the shrubs are no higher than 30 inches in a triangle that will allow a motorist coming to the intersection, stopping at a stop line, and being able to see whether or not he has the opportunity to...
So that 99-foot measurement was a result of the shrubbery?
At that point, yes.
At that point.
Exactly.
But the shrubbery was gone, it would be improved too?
Improved by how much?
Well, depends on how much we cut it back.
No, if you cut it back completely, because at a certain point, that move, you know, if you cut that shrubbery down, it allows you to see 99 feet down, or allows you to see 150 feet down?
Now you see 99 feet.
Oh, okay. So when you cut the shrubbery down, you see 99 feet? You're not going to see, you're not going to see anymore?
I live on that corner, and I got a notice from the town to cut it back four feet, which I did. I cut it back more than four, about five and a half. Excuse me, sir. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I don't want to...
All right, you know what? Will there be an opportunity in a moment, and if you want to add to...
It's been done.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So the site distance is 99 feet coming out?
Correct, right now.
Okay. Even with the shrubs cut down?
Right now.
Well, we can determine when that happens, but whatever, we understand the lead line.
What we'd like to see...
But you're not going to see, my point is, and you're not going to see any more than 99 feet once the shrubs are cut down?
No.
You'll see more.
You'll see more. What we recommend, you will see more than 99 feet. What we recommend, in terms of the site distance triangle, is 15 feet from the edge of the curb on both sides, and the entire swath, that entire triangle, to have height no higher than 30 inches.
At all intersections?
Well, that would be great, if you could do it.
Right.
But that one, you know, we don't study every intersection.
Understood. Want to say it again, 15 feet, 15-foot triangle?
Yes. The legs are 15 feet, and the hypotenuse will be...
We have it right over here. We do that over here on Brook Manor.
Actually, I think that a village code is more restrictive. I think we're 25 feet from the edge of curb, which I only know because I've got a corner property, and I was talking to our building inspector recently, doing some fencing improvements, and he pointed that out to me. So that would be an even greater site distance triangle than yours.
All right.
So the bottom line is that while it would be nice to definitively say it's safe or unsafe, it's in a gray area. Speeds are elevated. I would certainly recommend that efforts be made to lower it. Right now, I notice that there is a speed board which advises the motorists of the speed of travel. That always helps. I'm not sure it's going to be left up on a permit basis or rotated.
It's been up for years.
There are times, I know the city of White Plains takes them and moves them to different locations, so this way they can share the benefit over many neighborhoods, but it does provide a measure of help. The other thing we recommended was that a crosswalk could be in place, or could be implemented, put on Church Street just west of Robbins, and the recommendation is, there are two parts to that. One, if you have a crosswalk, you must have a sidewalk, because on one side, so that if you're taking you from one unsafe location to a safe location, that safety location should be continued until it's terminus. So it really should go from Robbins down to Broadway. We also suggested, if budgets allow, and I know times are difficult, but that in addition to it just be a painted crosswalk, it might be a raised crosswalk, or what we call a pedestrian table. That would serve as an additional traffic calming measure, because it slows cars down, it provides a broad area, it's not a high impact, it's not the type that emergency vehicles get jolted on, it's more in undulation, but it tends to slow down vehicles. It comes at the beginning, especially where we're recommending it, which is, as you come out of the town into the village, that would be the location of the raised pedestrian table.
How much are they as raised?
About four inches.
And it's like a speed hump?
Yep.
I mean, you go up four inches?
Yep.
At some point, all four tires are on it?
On it.
And then you roll off on the other side?
Yes.
So one of these cars speeding down the street at close to 40 miles an hour hits this, what happens?
Well, first of all, there's a gradual, it's, you don't have four inches at like a curb. It's a very gradual rise, and then you have about 10 feet of constant or flat area where the pedestrians cross, and then there's a decline. And basically, as I said, it becomes an undulation, and because of it, it upsets, you know, this is based on studies that...
No, but I was just wondering, you know, I'm sure it upsets it, very much so. I mean, if I was traveling 40 miles an hour and hit something even at an incline like that, I just wonder what happens with all your studies that you've done? What happens to a car going 40 miles an hour that goes over this raised crosswalk?
The motorist feels uncomfortable.
But nothing happens to, as far, they don't lose control?
No.
They don't curve the road?
It's not, it's not like a speed bump where you hit it, and there's an impact, and it hurts an axle. It's a slow rise, and a steady, and then a slower...
So the car wouldn't become airborne, or anything like that?
Nope, it should not become airborne. If you're driving 60 miles an hour, you might...
Maybe it would.
Yeah.
But at 40, which is kind of what the, what you're going at that point.
What the studies have shown is that if you put it on a road similar to Church, which has an average of an 85th percentile speed of about 40 miles an hour, it tends to drop that about three to four miles an hour.
Yeah.
So it becomes a...
I just wouldn't want a person in the crosswalk while they were reducing their speed, you know? What's going to slow them down first, the crosswalk or the pedestrian, is what I'm saying?
Well, it's a lot of things. First of all, you have to sign it, you have to show the oncoming motors, the motor that's approaching it from east and west.
Of course.
And that in itself is a device to calm, because it's advising the motorists that they just can't drive there.
Is there any standard that when you have a crosswalk and a raised crosswalk at that, that you would have a stop sign at that crosswalk?
No.
So you would have a crosswalk with no stop sign?
Correct. It would be continuation, it would be equivalent to a middle-of-the-block speed hump.
So people crossing the road there with oncoming traffic with... So people crossing the road there with, oncoming traffic with a 99-foot sight distance on one side, or 100-foot sight distance on one side?
That's coming out of Robbins. I'm not talking about coming out of Robbins. I'm talking about for the cars that are driving on Church.
I know, but what I'm, you know, if you can't, if you can't see 99 feet this way, at what point, when you come around, because that's right what you're talking about, there's a curve in the road. The curve from where you are at Robbins to, if you're on Church Street, that 99 feet from what I could see, when I'm there, is, is, there's, they're coming around a curve. So these people are coming around a curve, and then they're going to hit a crosswalk, say 100 feet down the road. You know, you don't-
The 99-feet restriction, in terms of being able to see, is for a car that's-
Turning.
-north and is looking completely to your left. It's 90 degrees to your left. It's not looking straight across Robbins, straight across Church, where you have excellent visibility, because it's right in front of you. So you're not looking at the crosswalk when you, when I'm talking about 99 feet. You're looking towards Broadway, and you don't see, you don't see currently more than 99 feet.
Should there be no left turn at a Robbins road?
No. No reason to restrict that. The better way to do it was, would be to improve the sight distance.
Can I, can I, the last piece of your description was the suggestion that the sidewalk or path, if we were to construct one on the north side, should be five feet wide?
That, the standards for sidewalk, and you know, we can take it everywhere you want to go with it. The standards for sidewalk are generally five feet in width. I would love to see a five-foot sidewalk displaced from the edge of pavement by a three-foot verge grass strip, which is good for collection of snow, for example, so that when the snow is plowed, it goes off the road, because 24 feet is very narrow, and you really don't have a lot of distance. And as the roads get, you know, more narrow with the, with the snow, it becomes a problem. And if you put it onto the edge of the curb, and there's a sidewalk which is right at the edge of the curb, you don't get the advantage. Sidewalks have traditionally been smaller. Four feet is accepted. If you're not looking for a standard on it, I've seen three-foot sidewalks. I think a sidewalk is, is a better recommendation, because, because of the narrowness of the road and the speed of travel.
And, and so, the five foot is essentially a guideline, but not a requirement?
That's correct.
That is, you could build a four foot, or even a three foot, subject to the ADA issues that may come into play?
Well, if you're talking about ADA, you're talking about five feet. You know, if you're, you have a wheelchair or a baby carriage, and two people are approaching each other, the traditional, you know, I mentioned 12-foot travel lanes, it's traditionally a two-and-a-half-foot pedestrian lane. And that's where we get the five feet.
And yet, in the village, it's a four-foot standard throughout the entire village, so-
That, I understand.
And probably white planes as well?
No.
Well, I guess my point there is, in a circumstance where at a number of places, it's, it's difficult to create enough space to get a sidewalk, because of whatever's on one side or the other. The ADA requirements allow you to have a narrow sidewalk, as long as there's some places where you can bump out, right?
That's true.
Right.
Almost like a bike gas lane.
So, I guess the point I wanted to get at is, I understand, and I understand the reasons, that a five-foot sidewalk is the recommendation, but that, the great need not be the enemy of the good. Is that fair to say?
That is absolutely true.
Okay. Did others on the board have questions?
I just, you know, I want to go back to the charge again, and, and it states here that to determine if the current roadway conditions pose a safety concern for pedestrians. I don't think we have an answer to that question.
I thought I'd answered that.
No, what, what-
Everyone will have a chance to speak, I assure you. Everyone will have a chance to speak.
I'm asking questions. Everybody's allowed to ask questions, including myself. I'm trying to understand this. What is the, is it, is it unsafe for pedestrians to walk on that, on that road?
Right now, the data does not show it to be unsafe.
It does not show it to be unsafe?
Correct.
Okay. So then my next-
Now, that's not saying that on engineering judgment, I wouldn't recommend this any way.
Right. Okay, I understand that part. I understand that part. But, you know, I'm not surprised at all. I mean, I expected, we know there was a lot of traffic on the road, we know they were going fast, and we know there was a few pedestrians. And again, given, yes, you're correct, if we have a sidewalk, there may be more, and whatever. But how can we calm the traffic, other than this raised crosswalk that you were talking about? There's, is there, can we put stop signs? Can we slow the traffic in other ways? I know the chief gets a little upset when I say using stop signs for calming traffic, but everyone, please, let me get through this. I have a couple of questions I would like to ask. Think I'm entitled to that. Thank you, Mr. Adler. Can you make any recommendations, as far as that's concerned, to slow, slow that traffic down?
The recommendation that we made for the speed hump is basically why, you know, why we made that the recommendation, so that it does calm the road. That was our suggestion for calming.
All right. What about stop signs?
It's traditionally not used. It has very little effect, especially mid-block. If, at intersections, yes, if, in other words, you have a series of intersections, and traditionally only the side street were stopped, but if you created four ways, it could work. It's traditionally not effective. What happens is motorists who come through a stop sign will recognize that it really doesn't belong, and if you drive the road enough, and everybody, every neighbor drives the road, you start violating that stop sign. And then the problem becomes, when you come to a stop sign where you really should be stopping, like when you get to Broadway, you take advantage of that mindset. So I traditionally not, do not like stop signs as a means of traffic calming.
Okay.
And what we do for traffic calming is to narrow the road, but it's obviously not working here.
Bernie, I don't want to interrupt, but your report does say, in lieu of a possible stop sign, a pedestrian crossing sign, right?
Oh, yeah, the pedestrian crossing signs are in advance of the pedestrian crossing, the raised pedestrian crosswalk. That will alert the motorists that there's a crosswalk as well as being raised, so that it, it does provide an advanced warning to the, to the motorists in each direction, that there is traffic calming there, and that they should travel slower.
And does that work, do you find?
Yes. As I said, we found, the data has shown that, it's reduced by three to four miles.
But, I mean, the signs, I'm just curious about the signs.
It's really one in the same. It's a, it's what you do in order to have it done. If you want a, if you want a speed hump, you tell the motorists that there's a speed hump.
And, and do you attribute the lessening of the speed to the raised surface of the crosswalk, or just to the fact that it's a crosswalk?
It's to the raised crosswalk.
So it's, it's a-
It's a speed hump that's-
Motorists who are practiced on that street know that it's coming, and that's what causes it to sort of-
Right. And it's a physical impediment, it's there all the time, and does cars, cause cars to slow down.
And, and in practice, DPWs don't have any trouble plowing?
Well, not if they're designed properly, and that's what we're recommending, with a long gradual taper in advance, and then tapering as well off, so that you could actually put the, you know, a speed plow can actually come up. And it's, it's not a jarring effect, so an emergency vehicle, predominantly fire vehicles are the ones that were most concerned. They would come to a speed bump, hit it, and tell our person standing in back would fall off or something. This doesn't happen. All it does is it undulates, they have to hold on tighter, it does slow them down some, it does, it's a second or two, in terms of their total travel and response time, but it does provide the traffic calming.
Now, is there a standard, if you put in a crosswalk somewhere, that there are, the sight distances for a crosswalk, from a car coming around a curve, or coming on a, is there a sight distance prior to that?
What you would do is, if you don't have sight distance, you have to put advanced sign to tell motorists that there's a sidewalk ahead.
Isn't that standard anyway, that you would have to have a signage to say that there's a crosswalk?
No, no. If you're coming to a downtown intersection which is signalized, and there's crosswalks there, you don't have a sign that says there's-
But a signalized, if it's not signalized?
Then you traditionally don't have crosswalks.
Right. That's my point.
So, so you're, what you're doing is, you're putting in a crosswalk, and because it's a mid-block, you're announcing, you're telling them.
But what I'm saying is that if, would, is there a, some type of standard that you need, if a person is walking in a crosswalk, does a vehicle have to have a sight distance between the crosswalk and their, their, where they're driving?
It would be the safe stopping distance.
Would that, it would be the same, it would be the same thing?
Same, same stopping.
So, so then at 40 miles an hour, it's 200 feet?
Forty miles an hour is 300 feet.
300 feet, which you don't have there at, where-
At Robbins, you actually have 200 and 80 feet, so you're, you're-
On one side, but not on the other?
That's correct.
Right. So you don't have the safe stopping distance?
Again, again, that's traveling along. It's not, what we found on Church Street, and you're using the 99 feet again, that's-
Well, even if it's 150 feet, it's not enough?
It's 230 feet.
Right, but it's not, not there, where you're putting the crosswalk?
That's correct. So what we do is, we tell the motorists that there is a raised crosswalk ahead, which tells them to slow down.
You hope, right?
Well, what the data has shown is that motorists slow down.
How far from the crosswalk would the signage be?
About 100, something like feet, 150 feet.
The sign would be 150 feet from the actual crosswalk?
Yeah.
So that's not the safe stopping distance?
Or you'd have that 150 feet plus whatever sight distance to the sign, so it would be additive.
So even if you can't see around it to the 150, you see the 150-foot sign, you might have 300 feet to see that, or 250 feet to see that 100, sign 150 feet in advance gives you enough time to slow down for the crosswalk.
Would you recommend lowering the speed limit to 25?
I don't think that would work. The reason people drive at 37, 40 miles an hour is because they say, they perceive that the motorists can drive, based on their traditional travel. If you lower it to 25, the only threat they have is enforcement. And if they think they can get away with enforcement today, then they will do that later. In other words, if they don't think it's enforced all the time. If they know that there's a police, an officer at that corner all the time, motorists will drive slowly. You can't do that, though. It's impossible.
It's a difficult road to enforce, but-
It's almost impossible.
And they're also, if you're heading westbound, you're coming downhill.
Yes. Yes.
So, you know, once you get to Robbins, you're pretty much-
Right, and then you start going up.
And then you start going up again, a little farther down, but around the curve, and, but you're coming downhill when you hit Robbins.
Yes, you are. That's why you need to get that advanced sign there, to tell those motorists that they should brake harder, you know, that they should be aware that there's a crosswalk ahead and a raised crosswalk.
In that kind of a setting, if you had a crosswalk, raised or otherwise, would you also recommend one of those signs that, in Bedford Road, for example, we put in the middle of the road on the yellow line?
Yep, or at the edge.
Right.
With a yellow pedestrian crosswalk, absolutely.
Right.
Would it work there?
Would it work there?
Would that kind of sign, usually you see those signs in kind of an urban setting. I just wondered, if in an outlying section like this, it might be disregarded?
I don't know, I don't know, but what you're looking for by saying would work.
I'm just wondering what the data says, if, you know, do they work everywhere, those kinds of signs? You know, they obviously work in front of the post officer in your school. Would it work out there?
I haven't seen any data on that.
Okay. Were there other comments?
What, what, what is it? What's the value of the yellow blinker caution light for crosswalks? I see those sometimes.
Value?
Yeah, what, what does that bring into the equation, having a yellow blinker?
It's a caution light.
But does that, is that going to be an effective addition to having whatever other features a walk, a crosswalk has?
If we find that the motorists are not responding, and not slowing down, because they can't see, you put the caution beacon, it's bouncing-
Can't see, being the-
They don't see the sign, it's, you know, it's not obvious to them.
Right.
It's like when you're in a traffic light, and you have a red light, and then there's a strobe in the red light. That really comes to enforce, you know, that, don't forget, the light is still red.
Right.
The purpose of the strobe is to call your attention to the sign that it's on, which is, it's a warning. It's an absolute device that says something more is here than just a standard sign.
Do you ever use rumble strips to slow traffic?
I really, I don't like them in neighborhoods. They're very noisy, very noisy. Neighbors-
They sure get people's attention, don't they?
Oh, yeah. You know, they, they slow you down, but they also keep the neighbors up.
Well, how noisy, how noisy are the speed humps? When vehicles are coming up, are you hearing this, chuk-chunk, chuk-chunk, when they're coming in off the doors?
Not really, no, because it's not, it's not, it's not the jarring effect. I, I haven't heard anything about noise coming off that, as like either rumble strips or, or speed bumps.
All right. Were there other questions from the board? Let me suggest that, while we have Mr. Adler here, if the first round of inquiries from all of you could be questions to him, if you have comments that aren't questions to him, if you could hold that till after we've given him a chance. I'd need to ask you to come up to the mic and state your name and address, and then ask whatever you have to ask.
Mr. Adler, you may want to stay up here.
You could sit there maybe and save yourself some trouble.
I'm going to jury bond.
Welcome, Joe.
My name is Joseph Potenza, I reside at One Club Court, and I've been following the activities of the village board regarding sidewalks. I have a number of observations and questions regarding your report that was prepared by Mr. Adler's firm, and also have some, you know, questions for him. First, the traffic counts taken by the consultant would show that the average weekday traffic is around 6100 vehicles, is consistent with traffic volume data that both the county and state have provided. So obviously, there hasn't been that much change in the volumes along Church Street. But I also would like to add that Church Street is the seventh heaviest traveler street in the village. The other road segments or greater average annual daily traffic volumes are streets like, two segments of Bedford Road, Pleasantville Road, Marble Avenue, Broadway, or Route 141, and Manville Road, which you're all familiar with. But again, I like to emphasize that Church Street ranked seventh in terms of overall traffic volume in the village.
And that's based on the county data?
It's based on counts that are taken by the county and state, and which were, obviously, in terms of, Church Street were documented by Mr. Adler as well. Now, I did provide the village board with a letter dated March 17th, which provided this information, and it also commented on the existence of sidewalks, and with two minor exceptions, all those other streets that have high traffic volumes have, two minor exceptions, they all have sidewalks throughout their land, within the village. And I just want to provide-
But they're not all village roads, they're all-
No, that's correct. They're not all village roads, but they are streets within the village of Pleasantville.
Some of them are county roads, by the college-
Correct, that's right. Some are county roads, but I don't think that's, that's relevant.
And state roads too.
Right, but that's not relevant. What's relevant is the volume of traffic and the fact that they have sidewalks. That's what's relevant.
So I have that, that's your letter of March 17th.
And correct. I would like to have that entered into the record this evening.
Sure.
I would also like to ask of Mr. Adler, if the recommendation for the installation of sidewalks on Church Street stems from a concern that he has with, with safety. What's the basis of the recommendation?
I try to explain that while safety is a, a verb noun in this case, where it, it could be defining everything in a black and white measure, in this case, it's not black and white, it's really a shade of gray. The road is not unsafe, but providing a separated pathway for pedestrians will enhance the safety of the road.
So George, lighting a sidewalk would make that street safer. Is that correct?
Yes, but it's not currently unsafe.
Is that true of any street? I mean, would you say that about any street?
You know, I, that, it's an interesting question, because I did think about that. If a street is very wide, for example, if you have a 30-foot or 35-foot wide road, wide road, uh, a sidewalk doesn't necessarily provide that advantage because motorists or the, the cars have a lot of room to, to travel on the street and don't necessarily have to avoid motorists. In this case, uh, because it's only a twenty-four-foot cartway, you really need some, some separation, and that's, that's the reason. And it's globally, the answer is yes, but in this case, it's more important.
Understood.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, the other question I had, uh, related to the sidewalks, would you consider the installation of the sidewalks there in and of itself be a traffic calming device? I know you mentioned the crosswalk, which is, would be an adjunct to the sidewalk.
No, I don't think a sidewalk is traffic calming, because that certainly will not create conditions for the motorists to slow down.
But the crosswalk would.
Crosswalk would.
Okay.
A raised crosswalk would.
Right, thank you. Uh, the other question I had concerned the standard, and I, I guess in the board and its question brought that out, that the comment in your report regarding a five-foot wide sidewalk and a three-foot, uh, virgin's, uh, grass area is, is a standard, is recommended, but that, based, based on the comments you've made, a sidewalk that would be as narrow as four feet and even possibly three feet could be constructed by the village, with the only caveat being, uh, a three-foot sidewalk wouldn't comply with ADA requirements.
Correct.
Okay, but there are communities that have constructed three-foot wide sidewalks, but you're, I guess, okay. Uh, the other comment I had, I had to do with the, uh, and just to get clarification, because I know the whole issue of sight distance came up, and I might just add that in the, uh, when Bernie was talking about the, was it ninety-nine, ninety-nine feet? Right, sight distance, it would be for vehicles coming out of a Robbins Road.
I understand that, I understand that. No, but I, I, you know, traveling that road, I, there is still a sight distance issue when you're, because there's a curve in that road, so, you know, that was my point.
And I wanted to get to the question of the sight distance, uh, in connection with this pedestrian crosswalk. Is it, based on my reading of the report, is it fair to say that, uh, that crosswalk could be constructed and would comply with the, uh, minimum sight distance standards? The crosswalk just east of Robbins Road?
We, we would recommend that, uh, while we may not achieve sight distance, optimal sight distance, that you have advanced signing to advise the motorists that there is a sidewalk, a cross, a crosswalk, uh, so that the motorists would slow down. Uh, that, the, the advanced signing for the, for the raised crosswalk is part of the traffic calming. So that would help the crosswalk work.
But I just wanted to clarify, if a crosswalk were constructed at that location, uh, it would have, it would be adequate sight distance based on the posted thirty-five mile an hour speed limit?
Thirty mile an hour.
Thirty mile an hour speed limit? I mean, that is fine, but my understanding from the reading of the report.
No, that's not, I didn't say that. The, the sight distance suffers, the sight distance is, ranges from two hundred and thirty to two hundred and eighty feet. For motorists who are traveling at thirty miles an hour, there is sufficient sight distance.
And that's the posted.
That's the posted speed limit.
But they're not going that speed, I understand.
But traveling at, uh, at thirty miles an hour, you need, uh, and if you're coming down, coming down a hill, you need more stopping sight distance, so it's more like three hundred and twenty feet.
Okay, i- am I correct in it, in, uh, understanding that you feel a crosswalk can be constructed at that location and operate safely if there were a sidewalk built on one side of the street or the other?
Yes, because the crosswalk would slow down the people as well, so therefore we can achieve greater sight distance.
No, the reason I'm probing on this question.
That's fine, Joe.
Asking, you know, no, it's that the village board, rightly so, uh, when this whole issue was brought up about the sidewalks, said, "We would consider the sidewalk at that location only if there was a safe location for people across to get from one side of the street to the other to access the sidewalk." I mean, that was the reason why the.
And I agree with that philosophy.
Right.
And just to be clear, your recommendation for the location of such a crosswalk was west or east?
I, I thought I recommended on the west.
I thought it was the, just the east flash would be, it would be east. You go west, your, the sight distance gets more questionable because the.
I don't see that it says exactly.
There was some discussion of the, uh, plateau area, this is the.
It just says at the intersection of Robbins Road and Church Street.
Well, so that's not be settled now, but that's a matter that we want the answer to.
But, but the key thing is that in his professional opinion.
In his professional opinion.
You could, oh, he's qualified.
I, I understand that, but I also don't, it's also been, in his professional opinion, none of those cars are going thirty miles an hour. And if they're not going thirty miles an hour, you don't have the sight distance safely for a crosswalk. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and say that, you know, they're gonna see a sign for pedestrian crosswalk and they're gonna slow down to thirty miles an hour. You know, I just don't, I don't see that happening, they, they, we have these things, you know, all over, I talked to the people on Ashland and Nanny Hack, and, you know, we have flashing lights, it's a school zone, it's twenty miles an hour, there's crosswalks, there's crossing guards, and they're still not slowing down. And, um, you know, that, that's my concern, is that, you know, do you want to put somebody in the middle of a street when they're going forty miles an hour? I, I, I don't.
People are crossing.
That's my opinion.
People are crossing the street. So, the issue here is what do you do to consolidate them so that, it's like you have a sign deer crossing, and the deer know where to cross? You're telling the people where to cross. And if they can be together, and if we can tell the oncoming motors, the eastern westbound motors, that it's not just a crosswalk, but a raised crosswalk, which will slow down the traffic, that would improve, it would lower the speeds, which would improve the sight distance, or the sight distance, the safe stopping sight distance required, uh, and would, would work.
But this, this, just, just to kind of clarify this, it would now be essentially two crosswalks, one at Broadway, and if this were instituted, one at this location at Robbins Road. So where do all the people between Robbins Road and Broadway cross Church Street?
Well, they need to go west or east.
You're not, you're not gonna walk, you're not gonna walk west or east to Robbins Road, uh, cross at a crosswalk so you can get to a sidewalk, uh, you're probably gonna find all those folks between Robbins Road and Church, you're just gonna cross the street to get to the other side.
Unless the board wants to continue sidewalks on both sides.
Well, no, but I'm, they're just, just raising that point because it's, I'm, I'm not sure what it does for the south side of the street between Robbins and Broadway, you got a dead zone where, you're, you're gonna do what you've always done, cross.
Right, walk, of course. That's a problem that you have, all of them.
So I, I'm just trying to enlighten the, the value of the walk, it really was going, the crosswalk would serve those folks within proximity of Robbins, a few properties, maybe two, maybe to the, to the west of it, and then.
And Comley Glen would.
And Comley Glen as well, some people coming out of Comley Glen would just stay on the roadside, um, but, uh, everybody would take that safe.
Right.
Okay, just, I, I don't know if many other people want to make comments, but I, at this point, just based on the, uh, report that the village requested and the recommendations which the consultants made, I would hope that the village would, would move this project ahead, at least to go and, and deal with the issue of the extent of the right-of-way and have surveys prepared, uh, to determine, uh, how much right-of-way you have and whether or not some type of improvement could be made in this location. And I'd also hope that the village would, uh, take steps to identify funding sources to not only address this issue on Church Street, but to have a comprehensive program for extending sidewalks in those areas the village would, is identify need for sidewalks. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Gordon Ash, one hundred Church Street, uh, I just have a question, how effective crosswalks are. The reason I asked the question, uh, probably the busiest crosswalk in this town is at the post office, and I would say, conservatively speaking, one out of ten cars totally ignore them. When people go into that crosswalk section, I would say at least one out of ten, the cars just go right by. And I was wondering, are there any statistics to show how effective crosswalks are? In other words, do people pay attention, drivers pay attention to them? Because what I see at the post office.
Yeah, but don't you think the miracle is that nine out of ten actually stop? I think that's.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's the last half, like the last ninety percent full.
Absolutely right.
We're considering a gift program, you know, if you stop ten times.
But are there any, is there any thing that shows the effectiveness of these things?
I, I haven't seen data specifically related to crosswalks only, and again, what I'm trying to do here is not just put a crosswalk on Church Street, but to create a traffic calming device to slow motorists down, so I'm gonna raise the crosswalk so that it's a speed hump, and that motor is coming to it, will slow down, that I've seen statistics which say I can reduce the speed by three to four miles an hour.
I've never seen a raised. We put a couple of white planes there. Yep, okay, thanks.
Thank you. I have, let me note that I have a, Bill White, who lives at the corner of Green Meadow and Church, sent me an email, he's not able to be here tonight, and at some point I will read it, it's a little bit long, so I didn't want to get in the way of people who may have pressing questions right now. Somebody else want to come forward?
My name is Shirley Ash, I'm the other half of that one, um, living at one hundred Church Street for forty-two years. Now, my problem is with the speed bump thing, every time the village repaves, where are you? Every time the village repaves Church Street, we are right there at the village line. I have to call Mr. Johnson and say, "Can you please send somebody out to level that out?" Because the cars, the trucks go kapoom, kapoom, kapoom over that. It echoes in our house, we're the house right there on, and we have cut the bushes back. Now, another problem is, how long does it take a truck to stop? You say a vehicle thirty miles an hour, two, what was it, two, three hundred feet to stop? Well, we have so many trucks on Church Street now. How long does it take a truck coming down off of that hill to stop before it hits a speed bump that goes kapoom? I, I, you can put anything in there, but it's going to make a noise, and I'm going to complain. I love to complain. Ask my husband.
I'm married, so I know exactly. Traditionally, uh, you repave a road every once to twenty, twenty-five years, so I, I'm not sure why you'd have to keep repaving a road.
Well, ask the village, because we have so many trucks on that street to wear it out.
I, I, I have never seen that.
Was the last one paved there, Penn? Do you remember?
We may, we may be patching, we haven't paved there in many years.
Oh, okay.
A full paving?
Well, whatever, I mean, I think the question at hand is whether the impact Mrs. Ash describes would be produced permanently vice versa.
The, uh, the, a truck takes longer than a car to slow down. Hopefully, the truck will understand that if he's coming to a speed hump, he gets jarred even more, or he undulates even more than a car, which has a better suspension, so he should slow down even more so.
Now, you want to put a sign recommending that they slow down, you're going east and west on this road. Now, if you're coming from west, uh, east, east to west, where are you going to put that sign on the hill? They come flying off of that hill.
As I said, it's about a hundred and fifty feet back of the, uh, raised crosswalk.
But it would have to be going east and west, and you would be in Mount Pleasant.
That's correct.
You'd have to get permission from the town.
From Mount Pleasant.
To put up the sign, I mean?
Yep.
Which I assume would be forthcoming, I can't imagine.
I can't imagine the, we don't.
Well, but we haven't been able to have the police coordinate.
They've been cooperating already.
The cops, the police have been doing a wonderful job on Pleasantville Road, they're sitting there, they're in Robbins Road, they're waiting, they're on top of, uh, Green Meadow, and they're waiting there, and I applaud every time one of the policemen pull a speeder into Robbins Road to give them a ticket. And I understand they can't go beyond the line because then it's out of their jurisdiction, but, I, I mean, this is a real problem, a crosswalk there, I think is suicide. I think it's suicide for our children.
They cross anyhow.
Well, they might cross anyway, but you're encouraging them to cross there, and that is a terrible idea.
My recommendation is to provide a more safe location for them to cross.
I don't think there is a safe location on Church Street. For forty-two years, we've been looking for a safe location.
It's, uh, it's a road, it's a location, it's a crosswalk like Topsy, it just grows. People go there, people need to cross the street, and what we're trying to do is recommend a safer way to do it.
I understand that, I understand that.
We're just trying, we're trying our best.
Don't agree with it, all right?
I understand.
All right, but it's a longer time for a truck to stop than it is for a car, and that is very important in that road.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Bancourt-Solomon, I've lived on Church Street since before it was straightened and widened. Before, there was a big, big, wide shoulder on the north side where you can actually get out of the traffic, and I'm wondering, when you were surveying, did you measure the shoulder width on both sides? Did you consider putting sidewalks on both sides of the street? And if you were to put sidewalks on both sides of the street, where would you put a crosswalk? Would it be at Robbins Road?
Based on the amount of pedestrians, uh, it did not appear to be necessary to have two crosswalks, it was just not two, north and south. I didn't think you needed. I'm sorry, sidewalk, sidewalk, let's get it straight. I didn't think you needed a sidewalk on both the north side and the south side, and it appeared that the majority of the travel, although it's not, uh, it's not overwhelming because there's not that many pedestrians, the majority of the travel and the paths that are created appear to be on the north side over the entire stretch, so the recommendation would be for the north side. I, I don't see the need for a lot of crosswalks, uh, there's, I, I would keep the one at Broadway, keep the one at Robbins.
Even if there were sidewalks on the south?
I wouldn't put a sidewalk on the south side.
See, putting a sidewalk on the north side of the street, the utility poles, however spaced, they're often in space, there are fire hydrants, and there are two driveway, or there's one driveway that would become unusable on the north side of the street. On the south side of the street, I measured it last night, was it last night? And it was up to almost the entire length of the street, it was seven and a half feet on the south side of the street. With no driveways, it would become useless if you, if you cut in or raised a walk, a raised walkway.
Utility poles and fire hydrants are found in all sidewalks, downtowns, urban areas, suburban areas, uh, what you, that's why, that's why we actually recommended a wider sidewalk, you know, five foot, so that you have room for people to be able to walk around a, uh, a fire hydrant or a utility pole. One person would have to wait, or what we do is we create a bypass, just a, a widening at that location, like, it's like a bypass lane.
And if that's the narrowest part of the, of the.
You try to do, you know, you do what you can, and if you can't get a five-foot wall, you put in a four-foot wall or a three-foot wall. Hopefully, you'll have more, more of the, the width than, uh, than the available.
But I'm, I'm, I'm still baffled by, particularly at the lower end of the, of the Broadway. But I'm, I'm still baffled by, particularly at the lower end of the Broadway. There's, there's much, much more room on the south side than on the north.
Well, as you get down, as you get down towards Broadway, there already is a sidewalk for the first 150 feet anyhow.
Yvonne, are you, I'm just wondering, sure, are you right? You're suggesting the south side is better than the north?
By measurement last night, yeah.
But there are more driveways, are there not, on the south side?
And then there's the ravines.
The ravine actually has a wall over it much of the way. It would mean widening that wall.
Uh-huh. The.
The broad.
Okay. As I recall, that's something to be looked at. If I recall AJ's description, there were roughly twice as many driveways on the south as the north. I'm not sure that I'm quoting that correctly.
The topography is very different.
Right.
Hi, Corinne Belucci from eight Robbins Road. Excuse me, Mindy, apologize from before. A little emotional. Anyway, actually, Mayor, you are correct. I think back in 2002 or 2003, the Public Safety Committee recommended the south side for a sidewalk. At the time. Yes, correct. It was the south side. There's documentation on that in the Church Street file. But I'm up here actually for a few questions. Some are from questions from neighbors who couldn't be here tonight. So I'll just pose their questions first. One is from Mary from Robbins Road. Her daughter has just started to drive, so of course she's concerned when her daughter pulls out of Robbins and turns left headed toward Broadway. And our question to you, Mr. Adler, is, or from her, is, is it feasible to put any type of mirror up so her daughter has better distance in terms of visuals for seeing any cars coming from Broadway down Church Street?
Mirrors tend not to be universally understood. The pictures or the images in the mirrors tend to be distorted because they're convex mirrors, they're round. Especially a new driver would find it very difficult to get the feeling of how far the car is away. The recommendation is to improve the sight distance and not to, that, that kind of a fix is what I would do if there was a stone wall there and I couldn't do anything else. I would put up a mirror. But that usually is like at a driveway where the person who's driving there knows the conditions of the road, gets to understand everything that's coming out of his driveway and can interpret a lot better.
Thank you. The second question comes from Stephanie, who also lives on Robbins Road. I think we kind of answered that, was just about the dimensions of the sidewalk, you know, five feet plus to three feet for grass prior to the five-feet sidewalk. So again, she was just questioning about the three-foot sidewalk. So that's been answered. The other questions that I have is, we do have documentation as well, and I don't believe it's in your file, but we have documentation from a neighbor on Robbins Road from 1988, from Mayor Farrington at the time, who was brought to the attention that they were not maintaining the path at the time on Church Street and that at that time, they were promised that the path would be maintained. So again, just following up on maintaining pedestrian safety on that street, I think we're going to need some resolution. What you're going to have to decide is north side or south side and obviously funding. And with that, just in terms of the funding, because I was very curious of what other communities were doing, I did reach out to Briar Cliff because they're putting a beautiful sidewalk in and going around the fire hydrants and mailboxes as well on their sidewalk of what they were doing in terms of how did they receive monies to replace the sidewalk and extend the sidewalk right past Briar Cliff School on Pleasantville Road. And I did receive a response from their superintendent of public works and they were saying that there are some monies available under the Safe Roots to School, which I believe Patty had applied for. And the village of Briar Cliff is trying to obtain some monies as well as have a five-year program to replace sidewalks in the village. No money has been received yet. And then, of course, he references what the area that we're looking for. He says, "In Briar Cliff, we are concerned about the schoolchildren. Grant or no grant, we need to keep the pedestrians safe. Our mayor and board have been actively pursuing fixing the failing infrastructures in the village." And I just have to ask the question is, what does the village board perceive to do? Or will we have an answer from you in terms of what steps you are going to do next to improve the safety? I have to respectfully disagree with you. I think you did a wonderful job with the survey and very thorough. However, when you're talking about safety and saying that that street, Church Street, is not safe, when you're walking in the middle of the road with your children to school because you're promoting for them, save the earth and the environment, and you're dodging cars and actually in the line of traffic and cars are going over the double yellow, you have a safety issue. The street is unsafe. So I just have to make that point. It's a concern. I would hope that the village, as Joseph Patenza was mentioning about the traffic counts, given the traffic counts on that street, that something's going to be done.
Could I just clarify the north-south question?
Absolutely, yeah.
The 2003 recommendation of the Public Safety Committee, when asked which side would they suggest, suggested the south.
Correct.
And I think the basis for that was that it would feed Robbins and Anne and therefore you had more people.
Correct.
On that side.
Correct.
Does it matter from your standpoint, so long as there is a crosswalk, is the north side an equally acceptable solution to you?
I, I don't want to be put in that position to answer that question. I want, I don't care where it goes. You know, I have an opinion, I do have an opinion. But, you know, I don't want to pick one side against the other in terms of, you know, whose, whose side is going to get the sidewalk.
I'm not asking you to do that. Is it fair to take from that answer that either side would be okay with you so long as a cross.
Absolutely. I have a preference, but either side.
Have you addressed the school district regarding the busing issue? Or reinstating busing?
I don't think busing can be reinstated. I, I do know that neighbors had busing way back when they were growing up in the village and that they were paying for the busing. I think they had payouts.
The school district never had buses.
Not to my knowledge. And if I'm not mistaken, you might know better than I do with the school because I'm not.
No, I just want to know if you approach them. I know what the rules are. It's their choice not to have buses.
I, I believe that if it's less than two square miles, they don't have to provide busing.
No, one, it's their option. They have the option whether to do it.
I don't know, I can't answer that.
A lot of trees down?
Apparently, there's a bunch of trees down Bedford Road and wires and stuff. I just got a call from my house. You might want to, you might want to.
Could you let us know what's going on? We just can let people know.
Just, yeah, they mentioned, what we just mentioned to the chief. I don't know if, I don't think Bedford Road is open right now because of trees being down. I don't think you heard the thunderstorm outside raging while we were in here. So for those of you going back to the Church Street area, you want to think about.
There we go. We'll just hang around for a while, no reason to go home. If, did you have something to say? At some point, I want to read, as I promised Bill White that I would, but go ahead.
My name is Roy Solomon, 101 Church Street. We did walk both sides of Church Street with a, with a four-foot rule and measure. And there, there is, I was surprised. I thought the north side was much more usable, but there seems to be the likelihood of less disturbance of people's property if it's built on the south side. The one part where there's that guardrail, there is a stone wall outside of the guardrail that's already about five feet wide and that would just need to be brought up to grade level. I think having a guardrail between cars and, and a sidewalk would be terrific. On the north side of the street, there is a pathway that was constructed by the village. Its maintenance has, has dwindled to next to nothing. But as far as I can see, people don't walk in it, even though it's there. At its narrowest, it's, it's two and a half feet wide. Most of the time, it's, it's seven feet wide. People don't walk on it. They walk in the sidewalk, in the roadway, right next to this pathway. And why anybody would do that, why anybody would do it with children is beyond me. I could see somebody doing it if they were wheeling luggage that had wheels on it that were small. I used to move my kids in a stroller there. As for when there was school busing, Yvonne went to school here since 1954. I don't believe that Pleasantville ever had busing. I don't, it's not that they gave it up, but it needs to be reinstated. I think you have a difficult job here. You have people who want opposite things. You can decide whether to make a sidewalk on the north side or the south side. You can also, of course, to decide not to make a sidewalk. There do not seem to be a lot of pedestrians. I also wrote an email to the board in which I suggested that at the, the week that was measured, the, a week in, in May, late May, I would think, from my observations as a, as a store owner in town, there's way more pedestrian traffic of school-aged kids in the warm weather. They have fewer obligations, tutoring is often over because exams are over in the high school, music lessons are over because performances are done. And kids have less stuff to carry at that time of year and the weather's better and they walk more. They have freer schedules. They don't have to get from the end of school to some kind of thing somewhere else that they need a ride for. And at that, at that period of time, we had 15 pedestrians, some of whom obviously were not students because at seven in the morning, they were heading in the opposite direction. So I, I don't know that there are that many schoolkids using this pathway all through the school year. It just seems that at the time, in the middle of May, when there would be the most pedestrians, we have a count of 15. It's, it's not a ton of people. And there's certainly not so many of them that they're forced into the roadway. There's, there's a way to walk one at a time without any problem. Unless they don't want to get their feet wet in the morning dew. I don't, I don't know what, what the issue is there. And there are, of course, lots of parts of Pleasantville that don't have sidewalks. I, I wasn't aware that Church Street was the seventh busiest street and the only one of those seven very busy streets that don't have sidewalks. But it does seem to me that what we really have here is a, is a traffic issue, that people are speeding. And if, if a driver coming, a driver coming to the stop sign at Robbins Road can't see to the west well enough to be safe, how can a driver going eastbound see a pedestrian far enough in advance to be safe? That's why I'm wondering, if, if, if you could put the crosswalk anywhere and have a sidewalk on the south side for part of the way and then a crosswalk at the very best place and then a sidewalk on the other side, I don't know that Robbins Road would be the place to put it. It seems to be that Robbins Road is the place where you have the most hazardous site, the, the least long sight distances in, in both directions. And you do have that problem of down at Mount Pleasant, Village of Pleasantville, where, where the road surface is not repaved at the same time. And, you know, for a couple of years, it's higher on one side and a couple of years, it's higher on the other side. And that's going to be right at that crosswalk. So there's a, there's a lot of issues to, to decide, not just, are you going to do it on the north side or the south side? Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Let me just take this moment to read this email from Bill White, six Green Meadow, who was not able to be here tonight. He says, "We've looked over the Adler report and the accompanying data and have some thoughts. Basically, it looks like the recommendation of a sidewalk is pretty generic with little basis in the data obtained. The data point to a serious traffic problem, both volume and speed, but little in the way of pedestrian issues. One might possibly make the case that there could be fewer pedestrian safety difficulties if a sidewalk were present, but that would be true anywhere, independent of the number of pedestrians. And in this case, there are almost no pedestrians at the Robbins Road intersection, effectively recommending a sidewalk is a no-brainer. A sidewalk is always more safe than no sidewalk. However, the data on pedestrian usage doesn't support any particular need for a sidewalk. In further support of this, there's no recommendation for a crosswalk independent of a sidewalk. I would think that if Adler thought there were a serious pedestrian issue, they would at least try to justify a crosswalk directly rather than just as a quote launcher for a sidewalk. If the sidewalk weren't there, it's not clear that Adler thinks a sidewalk would be needed. The vehicle traffic issue, however, seems underplayed in the report. From the ATR count spreadsheet, consider the traffic going eastbound on Church Street during the 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. rush hour, when there were about 600 vehicles a day averaged over the three weekdays, or about 300 per hour, or five per minute, or about one every 12 seconds. It looks like the 50th percentile of speed is about 35 miles an hour, with at least 15% of vehicles exceeding 39 miles per hour. Speed limit is 30 miles per hour, but fewer than 25% of the vehicles are at or under that speed. This is formidable. It gives you an idea of the difficulties one faces coming out of walking or driving at Robbins Road looking left. And it doesn't even consider looking right for the westbound traffic, about 430 vehicles a day, weekday, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. Look at this same situation, traffic eastbound coming down the grade towards Robbins. According to the Adler report, the sight distance there is approximately 280 feet. However, the required stopping distance is 215 feet for people traveling at the speed limit of 30 miles per hour. But with 50% of the vehicles going 35 miles per hour or faster, the stopping distance is minimally 270 feet for those going exactly 35 and presumably much farther for those going faster, for example, those 15% doing 39 miles per hour or better. So at least half of the vehicles coming over the crest of the hill towards Robbins would barely be able to stop in time if they saw anyone. Clearly, these people are going too fast. Something should be done about traffic coming to bring about safer conditions. Adler says very little about this dangerous traffic situation. Very little was said about the rest of Church Street outside the Robbins Road intersection. The report does mention pedestrian traffic, but doesn't say exactly where it occurs, except for a couple of people in the vicinity of Robbins Road intersection. If, for example, most of it occurs east of Green Meadow, then one alternative might be to have pedestrians use Green Meadow Road instead of Church Street. Adler also does not address the ease or difficulties associated with sidewalk construction, although having a five-foot wide sidewalk, considerably larger than anything exists in residential parts of the village that I know of, plus a three-foot verge, total of eight feet, is a major hit on the roadside. In fact, Adler does not address any alternatives beside the recommendation. I would have thought there'd be a certain amount of discussion here, e.g., pathways, north versus south side, walkways only part of the way, et cetera. If there were some give and take there, it'd provide a better understanding of exactly what is the merit of the recommendation. By way of comparison, New York State performed a traffic measurement on Manville Road at Guyan Street. Let me finish this and Patty, can you give us a report on what's going on? Okay. So we're talking about, I'm sorry, looking at the ATR data, this is the New York State traffic measurements. Their weekday adjusted traffic count was 6,329 vehicles, not that much more than Adler measured on Church Street. So we're talking about Church Street having almost as much traffic, given a three-year difference, as one of the busiest streets in the village on a state route to boot. Yet Church Street has a more dangerous road condition, grade sightlines, road width, et cetera. For Manville Road peak hour, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. traffic, the average weekday two-hour counts were 440 southbound and 517 northbound. This includes traffic for Bedford Road School, not just through traffic. Church Street is indeed a high-traffic situation. So those were the comments of Bill White. But let's stop for a moment and Patty, can you give us a report on what's going on with storm damage here?
Yeah, I can, Mayor. That little cyclone that came through, really just came through Pleasantville pretty hard and we lost a lot of trees along Bedford Road and Manville Road, large, large limbs anyway. No property damage to houses so far reported, couple of houses without power. But there are trees down along Pleasantville Road, Manville Road, and a couple near Broadway and Manville. So we know so far. Marble Avenue has some flooding, so that's not going to be an easy way home either. A couple of manholes popped from the, the force of the storm and the surge of the water. A couple of manholes on Manville Road, one by Jacob Burns. So Public Works is out there, the fire department's out there. It's calming down rather quickly, as quick as it came, it left. But we've got a lot of storm damage outside, so just.
All right, Bernie, what do we do now?
Con Ed, did you chop down all those trees yet? Con Ed, Mr. Fear, we'll have to get after them in the morning.
We'll get to the White to write us another memo. Very thorough.
So just take it slow, be careful. It's, but all the emergency services are out cleaning up already.
All right, was there anyone else in the audience who wanted to add another comment, ask a question, or just make a comment?
I'm Doug McDonald, 99 Church Street, and my wife and I have enjoyed Pleasantville since 1974, so we're a little bit behind our neighbors, the Ashes. I was concerned about some issues here and I appreciate, Mr. Adler, the report of your engineers regarding the fact they found no pedestrian accidents on Church Street in this three-year period. However, I'd like to address the issue of the presumption of safety by the installation of sidewalks. On our side of Church Street over several years, there are at least four auto accidents. our side of Church Street, over several years, there are at least four auto accidents that have occurred. The cars, since Church Street does curve to the left as you head toward the village, apparently people who were driving under some kind of an influence or a lack of some, found themselves crossing an area far enough, 10, 20 feet off of the road, which, if a person were on a sidewalk at that location, they would have had a chance. Gordon Ash has reported several years ago while he was walking his dog, he fortunately made a right turn instead of a left, and wasn't near our property when this driver tore off the road. People have hit the telephone pole, power pole near our property, and some local neighbors drove into a garden area. You know, so there's no security particularly with a sidewalk. I mean, if you want to put up jersey barriers, you know, these tall concrete things are a waste of time. Maybe, you know, people would be indeed safe and secure. But I think prudence on the part of pedestrians is the better part of this situation. We would need to train our children to respect traffic and not ride their bicycles except against the flow if they want to see what's coming at them, or at least to walk and jog against traffic, so you have a heads-up, so to speak. The fact that the road curves also very much limits and restricts line of sight, access to Robbins and other areas. In fact, Mr. Ash has indicated to a neighbor that his parking car on the shoulder killed his view up the road. So, you know, he said, "Please don't park there." I have a concern also if Mr. Adler considers this, well, he says it's not a speed bump, but I can imagine any one of these grass-cutting factory trucks hitting a speed bump and scattering tools and lawnmowers and everything else all over the neighborhood. And we have our share of heavy construction vehicles. I'm not talking about the occasional dump truck. I'm talking about these Meister things, these trailers. It's a major east-west corridor. In fact, one day, I was very concerned. Somebody said, "Oh, the trucks are local construction." Well, one came tearing along Church Street, and I said, "What the hell? I'll follow him." I did, all the way to Stanford. I said, "Boy, I'm crazy," but, you know. This is anything but local.
How fast were you going?
This is anything but local. And Church Street, unfortunately, serves as a major east-west corridor for people in Armoc and east. A lot of Connecticut drivers pass our house. And in fact, there's so much congestion at times that traffic backs all the way to Colony Glen. You know, I said, "My goodness, what's all this about?" Well, and I wonder, Mr. Adler, if your group included in their analysis the numbers of heavy trucks that were using Church Street?
No, we didn't.
You didn't? Ah. And the other thing, I was hoping I would see in your data regarded the ultimate top speed that some of these drivers are achieving. I mean, there's a youngster who has a black card and catches license number, whatever. I heard him racing his engine while he was coming downhill, passing Colony Glen, and he managed to get past the radar sign without having it indicate. You know, that's pretty fast. And I was hoping not to hear the resulting sound over the crest of this hill, a crumple metal or something worse. So we, you know, we have youngsters who use these signs as a challenge. And I don't know how in the world a police department can enforce the speed limit, except to have one of these things like a red light camera. You know, you see the speed, and the thing takes a picture of you. I'm sure there's a grant out there that would enable this.
Patty, do I recall correctly that we need state legislature approval to do that?
Yeah, we looked into it because I thought they were fascinating devices. Those things that we have now, those 30 mile-per-hour readers or whatever you want to call them.
Yeah, well, this thing-
They do have built-in cameras, and they do give you radar printouts that you can use.
Well, I've been tempted to take a video camera and just sort of sit there for an hour.
But it's not legal in villages in the state of New York to use that for enforcement.
But it is in New York City.
No, it's not. Only intersection, it's red-white, not speeding.
Right.
That's the only thing that the state-
That's right. Yeah. I got one of those tickets.
Well, at any rate, I pretty much concur with the other opinions, so-
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Well, thank you very much. And I appreciate what you've had to say, Mindy.
Thank you. At least somebody said, "Thank you." Mr. Adler, so am I to assume that your vehicle counts when you said it is trucks and cars?
They were included.
Oh, so it's just vehicle is truck or a car? Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you? My name's Otto Lyons. I live at 154 Bear Ridge Road. I've spoken at other occasions. I'm actually impartial to, I don't-
You're in Mount Pleasant?
I'm in Mount Pleasant.
East of Robbins, right?
Right. I consider myself a resident and expert at backing out in this intersection because I'm right, my driveway is right where you come around blind from the S-curve going towards, and I see them coming both ways, and sometimes I'll have nine cars coming down. Your survey does a very good job of counting. It doesn't count clusters of cars, which you have from time to time, and it picks a range of time for pedestrian travel pertinent to school, but there is pedestrian travel on that road at all hours of the night. You'd be surprised. You see folks walking in the middle of the road, on the side of the road, using, you know. But I've made some of those points earlier in earlier statements. I think everyone that's spoken here against the intersection has conceded the point that it's a dangerous road. It's a high-traffic road. In my line of work, which is as a compliance officer, we have an adage, which is, "Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. You fix what you can fix. You reduce the risks associated with what you can reduce the risks in." At the end of the day, trucks versus people, people lose. Cars versus people, people lose. So it's a question of what can we do to give people the highest statistical chance? Are there going to be people that veer off the road, whether they're impaired or not, speed or not? That's going to happen. Unfortunate as it is, it happens from time to time. I grew up in Queens. I've lived in the Pleasantville area for the last decade, since 1995, more than a decade now. And in Queens, they faced similar things, more traffic, high speeds. They've used speed bumps. They've used forward stops. One thing by itself doesn't always do it, but you put the police, you put the speed bumps, you put the forward stops, after a while, people start to get the message that it's going to cost them. People might not be so concerned. They might say, "Oh, I can beat the ticket." But when they bottom out the bottom of their car, and it affects their exhaust system on their low-rider fast car, they drive a little slower. And yeah, they could do that once and really get a jolt, and they might not be able to see the pedestrian. But the next day that they travel on it and they bottom it out, they're going to say, "What's that doing to my suspension?" And the next day, when it hits their exhaust and stuff, and they're going to get the message. It's a subtle reminder, always there, you need to be going-
As long as it's not a pedestrian on his bumper when he's bottoming it out, you know.
But right now, there could be a pedestrian in that blind spot where they can't stop, and there's nothing telling them. But they come around that blind spot where there is a pedestrian the next day, and they say, "Oh, I bottomed out yesterday, and my exhaust is rattling from that. Maybe I should slow down." And, oh, there's a pedestrian there, or an animal, or deer, or what have you, right? So over time, it will have an impact on the psychology of drivers on that road. You can't beat it. There are people that will find the speed traps and go around it. There are people that will run the stop signs. You can't beat it all, but you can do what you can do to manage it. Now, for one side of the road versus the other, I think that there's equally fitted arguments. I think that the main argument against the side with the ravine is the ravine. I occasionally commute through Pound Ridge, Scotts Glen. They've done a really good job of putting a pedestrian road there. They have it flowing around physical impediments, rocks.
They have little bridges along. I know exactly that road.
And I would urge all of the board to come and take a look. I've brought these just to review at your leisure. I took those before they put in a very nice replacement guardrail, which is a wood, and it looks much more aesthetically pleasing. But again, it gives pedestrians a higher safety. You can see that they don't stick with a fixed width. They adjust it over time. They've used two different types of bridges stylistically. They've reduced costs associated with construction by keeping cement to the spots where you need wheelchair ramps, whereas for the longer stretches, they use less costly materials such as asphalt. And they've done a really good job of it. If you look through, it's aesthetically pleasing. It serves its function. You have a lot of joggers on it. You have a lot of pedestrians going and servicing. You have sort of two-store areas, and that new extension there enables pedestrians to flow freely between the two without having to go into a fairly busy double-yellow line road. So all of those things sort of can add up, not be an eyesore. I know one of the things, growing up in Queens, is things can easily run into being eyesores and people protest and stuff. You can do it the right way and make it aesthetically pleasing, as Pound Ridge did, and still adding safety. As for the number of pedestrian children using this road, I think as a father of two small children, two small sons, I wouldn't want them walking on this road. But I know at some point, you know, as they get older, they're going to want to walk to their friends and not get driven by mom or dad. They're going to want to be out on that road. They're going to want to go down the road to their friends and stuff. And having a sidewalk where they can travel freely on will enable them to go into the village. I made this point the last time I spoke before you about parking traffic on Ashland Avenue. This is a walking community for the school. And in the warmer weather, people want to walk with their children and have part of that village experience. And the congestion, a lot of times on blocks like Ashland, I think is created by parents that are on these feeder streets that don't feel comfortable walking on that road. So they end up parking in Ashland Avenue, adding more traffic and creating congestion in other parts in the village. If you enable people to be able to utilize the walkways in the warmer weather, they won't have the urge to drive and park and cause that congestion. So you solve more than one problem by fixing this and creating a safe passage that will serve generations and generations. Yeah, we're the taxpayers now, but no one's going to take out that road, that walkway, once it's there, right? We can only improve upon it over time, and that's what we're all here to do, right? We're here to sort of build on the legacy of all the things. I mean, there was a crazy intersection here with the rails, right? We've all bought the little Pleasantville book, and they made a decision to raise Bedford and Manville and create the bridges and get rid of the insanity of the railroad crossing with the traffic. They just said, "It's gotten to a point." And on Church Street, it is a major auditory. Trucks use it, buses use it, people have used it. They've found that it's a lot straighter than Nantahagan Road. They don't have to go down as far into Mount Pleasant and then curve back around the reservoir. It's a much straighter shot. So they're going to go the straighter shot. It's going to save them a couple of minutes. And if they can pick up an extra speed and no cops are watching and everything, all the better, right? So if you say, "That's the signal that they've gotten," what can we do to change that signal and change their habits by introducing things that will force them to reduce their speed and treat it more like a community road rather than a thoroughfare, a parkway? That lesson will be learned over time, and the traffic pattern will shift over time, and it'll be much safer for everyone involved, motorists as well as the pedestrians. Thank you.
I'm Laura Moore. I live at 12 Robbins. This is my first, I watched at home with my kid, my first time actually being here, and I promised myself I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to say something. I've never met most of my neighbors that are here from Church Street, although my son speaks very fondly of the Ashes because he had a great time at their house at Halloween, apparently, getting candy. So he waves to you every day when we drive past. So that's very endearing. But I just want to say two things, I guess. And the first is that AJ's beginning kindergarten in September. He's excited. We're all excited. And we've been talking a lot about, you know, riding the school bus, and I've had to explain to him over and over that, "No, no, you don't have a school bus." "Okay, well, then we can walk." "Okay." So he went to camp at Crossroads this year, which was great, and he begged me every day for the first two weeks of camp to, "Please walk. Please, please walk. It's not that far. Please, please, please." "Okay, fine." I'm not afraid of getting due on my feet. I'm happy to do it. You know, bundled him and his three-year-old almost sister up in a stroller, and we walked. And we walked in the street, and we walked on the side where there's kind of a road and then sort of a path, and mommy's feet got wet, and they thought it was funny, and, "Can you run up the hill?" Okay, sort of. And here comes the cars. We dart into a driveway and dart back out. It was scary. I walk that road at least four times a week by myself, at night, dusky time, after the kids are in bed. And I'm scared, but it's fine. It's me, and I can kind of watch what I'm doing. There is no way I could ever envision myself allowing, or at least knowingly allowing, my children to walk on that road by themselves. You're right. It's very frightening. It's a very frightening road. So with that said, I would love nothing more for them to be able to walk on that road. And I would love nothing more than to be able to walk them to school and have that experience. And they're right. We have no guarantee that doing something would slow traffic, that doing something would allow us a safer passage. Maybe they're right. Maybe it would just scatter tools everywhere. But for sure, we know that if we don't do anything, nothing will change. It's going to get worse. It gets worse. It's getting worse over time. I mean, I think you can look at people who have lived here their whole lives, and they can tell you that it's gotten worse over time. And that is for sure. But by not doing anything, we're not going to get anywhere. At least trying something would give us an opportunity to see if something works. And I really, I love Pleasantville, and I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. And I really, I would love the opportunity to be more a part of that piece of the village and really enjoy that experience.
And why didn't you send your son to Pleasantville Day Camp?
The town camp? Honestly, honestly, because he had an opportunity to stay there longer. He'll be there. He'll be there next year. But mommy works, mommy works. So, you know, we have to kind of work around that a little bit, but that was the reason.
She could walk through the woods in the aqueduct to Robbins Road to the pool.
Walk through the pool with the big signs that they don't cross yet, really?
That's what all the kids used to do. You go through the woods.
With all the big signs- But there's lots of big signs that say, "Don't, your private property, don't walk this way."
It's the aqueduct property, yeah. You walk on the aqueduct ever?
We can't walk in there. It's a cornhole. Can't walk.
Well, you know, we went down Ann Place, but we-
Yeah, down the back, yep, yep, yep.
I was all the kids on Ann Place, and they walked through the woods, and they went to the pool.
Your village board is not recommending-
I was just going to say, I'm like, "Well, if I get stopped, if I can say..." But the trustee told me it was okay. I could do this. I'm happy to try it.
But they still have very good friends on Foster Place, so-
That they met along the way, yeah.
And with manners, so they get up there in a certain way. So just, you know, say that.
Anybody else have-
Ruth McDonald, 99 Church Street, members of the board, Mayor, Mr. Adler. I'd like to know if you considered, when you mentioned there were footpaths, evidence of footpath, did you know there was a pre-existing gravel path with a curb and retaining walls, a series of retaining walls, established by the village of Pleasantville? I really wish that had been brought to your attention. I wonder, given the fact that you say it's kind of a gray area and not that there's, you did not find this street to be unsafe, do you see any, would you consider the restoration of a path as opposed to a sidewalk, if it were properly maintained and wide enough? I remember when it worked, it functioned very well before many of the people who are advocating sidewalks were living in Pleasantville. It worked extremely well.
It really depends on what the path is, but certainly consider it.
Do you have any, can you acquaint us with how you've seen it work in other communities? Do you have any, can you acquaint us with how you've seen it work in other communities?
People, every, every community has their own standard. A lot of paths, whether they're created officially or not, work because people get off the road. In this particular case, very few people got off the road.
What, what I don't understand is why, I don't understand how parents could take their children into the middle of Church Street when there is at least space, as some of my neighbors brought to your attention. We took a 48-inch rule and to our surprise, really my amazement, discovered that there's a great deal more than, than seven feet on both sides of Church Street where people could walk safely. It just seems to me a simple solution. And I would like to make one last appeal to everyone advocating sidewalks. You mentioned, sir, in your report, that you were recommending sidewalks because of safety and also, what was your, you said, oh, to provide a comfortable walking environment. But I really feel that we should all consider the comfort of the people whose property and privacy would be devastated. I'm not talking about myself, about my flower garden. I'm thinking of people like the Norcasas, for example. If we can have a safe walking environment without the cost, and not just the cost of the property owners maintaining that, the sidewalks in the winter would be expensive, but the taxpayers, the people who do not live near Church Street and who do not have sidewalks, just please consider the cost to everybody before decisions are made. I think it's relevant. I think it's, it's a fact that maybe it's not engineering datum, but I think it needs to be considered.
You wanna speak, Shane?
Yeah.
Let me just interrupt briefly and Patty just handed me the latest report, which is that after this brief storm, all the roads in Pleasantville are either fully or partially passable, although we recommend that you avoid Bedford Road near Sutton Place because there's a tree tangled in the wires. And there are still some power outages reported near 75 Broadway. So things are improving and we're out there working on it. A little squall has happened while we sit here in the peaceful space of a community meeting.
My understanding also is that in some areas cable is out. I got a call from my wife that she cannot know when the meeting's over.
PCTV76.org.
And we also only have eight minutes left on this tape, so we're gonna have to pause.
So chalk dashing.
I'm gonna talk very quick, fast. And I'm gonna ask a question and hopefully, I mean, I know a lot of people on Robbins Road and I like a lot of them and they're fun people and hopefully, and I'm sure my wife will slap me for asking this question. I just hear a whole, whole bunch of stuff. I hear all sorts of stuff all the time. So I just wanted to ask this question while we had a lawyer in the room, while we had a consultant in the room.
The police officers have left.
Yeah, the police officers have left, so I will be leaving handcuffs hopefully. But my question really is, you know, we live in a litigious society. I mean, you know, people sue, unfortunately. And right now, we have a situation where things, you know, may or may not be, I guess, depends who you ask, unsafe, but if we, if we have a presumption of safety by adding a crosswalk, does that or does that not? And I think that's kind of, this is, I think, a key question really about the sidewalk. Does that or does that not potentially opening us up to any sort of lawsuits if something happens? So for example, now, today, if someone just crosses the street, there's no presumption of safety, right? If we had a crosswalk, does that open us up or does it not open us up? And I think that's an important question as we discuss this, as a taxpayer who doesn't happen to live in the area. And I'm sorry to ask that question, I hope that doesn't affect, but it's, to me, as a taxpayer, an important one.
Joel, can you answer that?
Well, I, I, I think legally, if municipality is aware of a patently unsafe condition and it's brought to the attention of the village by a consulting firm such as Mr. Adler's firm and the village does nothing to address the safety issue, then yes, there is a potential liability. But again, as I've heard Mr. Adler say several times, and I think it's clear from his draft report, he's saying that this is not an unsafe condition that exists presently on Church Street. So I don't think that there is potential liability.
I think the other half of Shane's question was if a sidewalk, a crosswalk is put in and that creates a liability, does that become an issue if the village has instituted this improvement and there have been some questions about that?
Yeah.
I mean, again, we've heard from Mr. Adler that that presumptively would not be the case, that there would not be a safety issue with the introduction of a crosswalk as long as there was a sidewalk or a passageway, shall we say? Possibly the reconstitution of some previous passageway between that crosswalk and Broadway.
Well, you know, I mean, again, you know, if you're addressing a condition and you are following a recommendation of a professional consultant, I, I think that the town, the village, I'm sorry, would not be exposed to liability. I mean, again, it's not to say that somebody's not gonna sue, because as you said, Mr. Lopez, we live in a litigious society and there's nothing to stop anybody from suing at any time. But I just don't see legally that we'd be opening ourselves up, you know, to some type of liability by not going ahead and putting the crosswalk in.
And I respectfully disagree based upon case law that I've provided. I'm sorry, Kate Moran Busby, 9 Robbins Road. Just a few points. There is no...
You made two points, so could you just say which you disagree on? Because you made two points.
I disagree that you are not, I disagree that the draft report as it stands, I don't know whether or not there will be another modified version or if there have been prior versions before this has been distributed, insulates the village from liability based upon the current state of New York law. Also, with respect to the notion of the presumption of safety with sidewalks or without sidewalks, my understanding based on information that I have given you before and discussions with Dennis Cannon, was it Dennis Cannon, the Right of Way Access Board, he had provided me some information.
Which you gave us in your...
Yeah. He had provided me some information and indicated that there is a presumption, whether or not a crosswalk is marked at an intersection of two roads, there will be a presumption of a crosswalk to exist. It is a natural place for people to cross. So currently at Robbins Road and Church Street, it is an intersection. So it would be a legitimate place. Also, with respect to lots of testimony, that there had been a path and whether or not the homeowners took that, you know, property back or the village failed to maintain it, it pretty much establishes in conjunction with some of the data in the report that since at least 1953, this village has been aware of the need for pedestrian amenities along Church Street. There is a lot of documentation that has been provided. There are requests repeatedly made for the improvements. And as far as the village being insulated from liability, no. And as far as any of the properties that have taken back the path or didn't contribute to maintaining it, they actually would also potentially be named in a lawsuit. And just, I think that, you know, the funny thing is, everybody's talking and we're all on the same page as far as the current conditions being unacceptable, whether or not it's for pedestrians, children, vehicles, anybody. But just even consistent with, you know, the numbers that Mr. White's email pointed out and the numbers that everybody else has been talking. An average person walks at, you know, three miles an hour. A child walks much slower. This is not a bus and school district. So you're going to have children, whether or not they were captured in the study. You know, there are teenagers that live in our area, right in our neighborhoods. They are walking. But an average person walks three miles an hour. Based on the linear feet, it takes approximately six minutes to walk to Broadway. Based on the traffic counts, consistent with what we read and even Mr. White's numbers, at non-peak times, you're estimating about 300 cars an hour. The math of that, at any given time, 30 cars are gonna pass a person. And so a person who is not able to walk anywhere but in the roadway, there are, there are a lot of chances for them to be hit. So the notion that it's more dangerous to channel everybody and get them across and get them out of the roadway, and as far as why people don't walk on that path, I have walked many times and at certain points you have to walk in the roadway because on that one point where it's kind of a hill as you're coming down on the north side, I'm sure Peter, you've seen it's p, there's like a telephone pole and you have to kind of go up. When there's any kind of wetness, it's mud. And so if you're pushing a carriage, you slide down. So you have to go down into the street before you have to come down a steady incline because you don't wanna go straight down the side into the road and then back out.
Sorry, Mr. Busby. He has to change his tape.
His tape, I'm sorry.
No, that's it. I just, you know, I just...
Hold that thought there.
You certainly hold.
Welcome. Because I had a couple of questions to ask you too. So we're back after a brief delay to change the videotape. Now, were you in the midst of a thought?
Yeah. Well, I, it's just, you know, a path existed. It is not there now. Whether it's the fault of the property owners or the village, doesn't really matter, but that does create a defective condition that people have been putting the village on notice of the need to repair and/or address in some form or fashion for a period of, you know, at least 20 years that we've come up with from documentation we've been provided. So, you know, I'm not going with the comments that you have made because I think you've also made clear that with the 24-foot cartway width and a vehicle traveling, I mean, you indicated yourself that it is on the narrow side for a collector road, one lane should be 12 feet, and the pedestrian parking impedes the flow. So even, you know, you didn't see a lot of pedestrians, but you saw some. And so at least during the times you were there, there was impeded flow. Is that safe or unsafe? I mean, impeded flow, I would tend to think is not a safe condition. And the bottom line is, your report recommends a sidewalk as best practice, not just from an engineering standpoint, but I also think when you combine engineering with, you know, legal liability, I think the bottom line is, it is incumbent upon this board, regardless of the positions that are being expressed, there is a job to do. And so, you know, we've kind of gotta move the process, is my request.
I understand. I mean, I'm still having trouble understanding. Are you saying that because at some point in the past, there may have been path there...
People said there have been.
That, that, that is an acknowledgement that by the village that it was an unsafe condition? I don't see how you can make that...
The existence of the path provided a means of ingress and egress from the village that is no longer present based upon either the village failing to maintain or the property owners attempting to retake the property that was deeased. You cannot adversely possess against the sovereign. So with respect to the property owners, I would say shame on you. I hope you have good homeowner's liability insurance if somebody is hit in front of their home because they couldn't walk where the path, regardless of the current condition, was at some point.
No, but I'm saying just because there was a path in the past...
But I'm saying, that's an independent argument to be made. It's a failure to maintain, it's negligence on the part of the village.
Well, and the other thing, and this gets into the ADA issue, and I had a discussion previously, not with Mr. Adler, but Mr. O'Rourke who works with Mr. Adler, is I understand that, Mr. Adler, your firm would not recommend creation of a substandard path that is not ADA compliant. Is that correct? That if there's any type of sidewalk to be constructed, it would have to be ADA compliant?
The recommendation is always to provide an ADA compliant path. However, if you have a substandard portion, you have to have a bypass.
Right.
And I think from the information that we had provided previously, there are a number of things that are ADA compliant that aren't necessarily concrete or asphalt to address the concerns of people. And we have also addressed, based on discussions with other people, that you can be ADA compliant without it being five feet across all the way down or four feet across. The minimum is 36 inches, as long as every 50 feet, you have a bump out to five feet for two wheelchairs.
Yeah.
It's almost like a little roundabout.
Right, yeah, that's what Mr. Adler thinks.
So you're talking about 1,500 linear feet. So this isn't a, you know, this isn't a massive feat to put something in that is appropriate and respectful to both property owners and, you know, ADA compliant and addresses really the needs of a large number of residents.
I had a couple of questions to ask you and I ask you because you're the person who has raised the legal issues. You know, one, one piece of what we have to grapple with, not only on this issue, but on all issues, is that if everything we were asked to do were done, we would have taxes dramatically higher than we have today. And so one of the questions to be asked is if your assertion that we have legal liability associated with not putting in a sidewalk, where else in the village do we have similar legal liability? And that goes to, you and I had the conversation about a sidewalk master plan, some quantitative method by which we rank priorities about where sidewalks go and then establish some goal for X year that would complete that build-out.
Right.
I understand the logic of that and certainly many places have done such a thing, but recognize also that there are certainly lots of places in the village, a number of prominent ones that have asked for sidewalks and thus far have not gotten them, and a number of places where putting in a sidewalk is difficult or problematic or harmful to lots of people and it becomes a cost benefit decision. Is it your position that in, in any street that someone asserts a safety condition that we have a liability to respond to it?
No, it is not my position. My position is with respect to my research exclusively on Church Street. I am not aware of the other streets that have asked. I mean, you know, we can talk about it, but just generally, the issue with Church Street is the fact that this has been notice of a condition for probably 50 years.
So again, and don't get me...
You know, so it's not just people saying, hey, we'd like it. These are people that are saying, the complaints and the requests that have gone in with respect to Church Street have been based upon it being really dangerous, based upon the status of the road, based upon the traffic count, based upon the width of the road, based upon the use of the road. You know, it's been a wind through everything with respect to the traffic count.
No, I...
It's a seven busy street.
I just, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not asking these questions to be argumentative. I'm just trying to probe the, the position you think the village is overall.
No, it's not my position. Anybody who asks for it is gonna...
But you cited case law to say that in three different occasions to us, to say that you do, yeah.
I have cited case law that is based on Church Street.
Well, no, that, that case law could be applied anywhere, can it?
No, it cannot.
Can't you, wouldn't you?
There are factual distinctions.
How do you know that? You don't know what we've been given from other blocks?
Well, then my question would be, other blocks, have they put you on notice of defects that have caused...
Could they put us on notice? Yes, according to your case law...
Let me just finish my line of questioning here. What I'm trying to understand here, in, in your view, you know, what you presented to us, which obviously is a significant issue for us to grapple with, you know, there are, there are other streets. We've had, as you probably are aware, in the last several years, an extended discussion with the residents on Nannahagen about the pedestrian conditions there. Similar to the extent that there isn't a record of accidents there, different to the extent that although it's very close to the school and is a school feeder road, it doesn't have anywhere near the amount of traffic that you have on Church Street. But nonetheless, we have residents there who have expressed a concern about the safety conditions there and have put us on notice that in their view it's unsafe. So do you think that the argument you presented for Church Street has implications for Nannahagen, for example?
Well, I think it becomes a question of, you know, whether or not people are expressing concerns or, and whether or not an addition of sidewalks becomes a necessity as a function of there being no other way to address things like cartway widths. The people, my understanding on Nannahagen, it becomes, it's a school issue. And I know that you guys have talked about a potential solution, but the police weren't happy with it, where you can make it, much like you do, what's the street next to Great Oak Lane or the one in Grandview?
Academy, one-way during school.
It's one-way during school. And you put, and, and because if you do count, if you look at the traffic, Nannahagen is not 6,000 vehicles a day. It probably has high traffic count during peak hours.
I completely agree that there's a distinction.
So there are other things that can be done to abate the problem as opposed to on Church Street. It is a collector street, it has high volume, you have examples of every other collector street, main artery, whether or not it is state, county, or anything else, it is within the village and it has been addressed by adding sidewalks. You know, I am not aware of any way... You know, I am not aware of any way that you can make Church Street one-way during peak hours or any other time, and quite frankly, the vehicle traffic counts don't warrant it. Because, yeah, our peak hours are 500 to 600 cars, but if you do the math of, you know, realistically the busiest times and you have traffic, you're still looking at, you know, 300 cars an hour. I don't know how you make a collector street one-way at any particular time during the day.
I mean, recognize, we haven't made Nannahagan one-way either.
Right.
So I guess the point I'm trying to get at, and maybe you don't have a response since that's not really what you've looked at, but Nannahagan has asked us to put in sidewalks, some people in Nannahagan, others have vigorously opposed it. Traffic consultants have looked at it. It's an extremely difficult physical condition in which to solve this problem. And we've looked at the alternatives you described, one-way, dead-end, a whole bunch of things, and thus far at least have not executed any of them. So, but there are people who feel strongly, and I certainly respect their viewpoint, that the village has failed to address what they consider to be an unsafe condition. I guess what I'm trying to get at, and I'm not getting at it as regards Church Street specifically, but just as regards our overall charge to maintain the health and welfare of the community, but also to maintain the fiscal health and welfare of the community in difficult times, that we're constantly in a balancing act. And there are lots of things that are asked of us for legitimate reasons and by legitimate people with good intentions and plenty of justification that we can't say yes to. I'm not saying that about this. I'm just saying this is a constant balancing act for us. And one of the questions I'm trying to address is whether the argument you presented about Church Street has relevance elsewhere in the village, Nannahagan, Washington, whatever it might be, that suggests that the village ought to be looking at, or has some legal requirement to be looking at a multimillion-dollar monthly, multi-year expansion of our sidewalk network. That's a question I'm grappling with.
Well, I can think about it and get back to you.
Okay.
You know, but it's not just legal liability and fiscal responsibility. I guess it's a function of just, you know, proper urban planning. As far as the function of the money, I think there are a significant amount of grants available. You know, we've had conversations with people. I think you can tap into certain things. You can't make everybody happy right away, but I think there are a lot of people in this village where it would really go far for them to believe that at least if you start something, get some type of plan in place, even if they're not going to get something right away. I think perhaps some of the reactions and the tone and the, you know, the discontent has been a function of, for years and years and years, it's just like banging your head against a wall because nothing's getting done. I don't think people are going to be unreasonable, but, you know...
No, I mean, I understand.
I could, we could, I don't want to do it on camera, but I, you know, we can make arguments either way. Yeah, which way you want to go. I mean, I'll tell you.
Spoken like a true lawyer.
If Church Street goes...
One point seven square miles of sidewalks, that's what we'll end up with.
Did you have anyone to add to your thoughts?
No, other than just to request, you know, what do we need to do now to move forward from this? I mean, you have a recommendation. I guess it just becomes a function of, are you going to adopt it in addition to, you know, just as a supplement to the 2003 Safety Commission, to all the, you know, all the records that we have? And where do we go next? And as far as the function of money, I mean, I guess we have to really have a sense of what it's really going to cost. I mean, I think we've talked before, and I think AJ was here, and he had mentioned that there's a 15-foot easement that, you know, for all properties. I know, you know, everybody on our block, when we signed, when we closed on our homes, there's an easement acknowledgement as part of the deed, so I don't really know that you run into these huge issues of acquisition of parcels. But I guess that's something to be looked at, and also just a function of, you know, I don't think a path or sidewalk or whatever you want to call it, wherever you want to put it, is really an insurmountable task. I don't think it will cost millions, you know. I don't, I think that there are things that can be done to start the process. You know, you just, that's your job.
Understood.
We'd just like to move forward and find out what it is you need from us to keep it moving forward.
Okay. Anybody else want to?
In case you didn't know, Church Street was widened and straightened in '57. The path was built in '80, maybe '81. It's not 50 years.
Forgive me, I'm not sure what all this sound and fury is all about, but two things trouble me. One, a matter of record, there has been no pedestrian accident on Church Street to anybody's knowledge, to our knowledge, since we're here since '74 and the ashes, who've been here longer. Point one. Point two, and I think you addressed this nicely, Mindy, are we on a path to becoming the north side of White Plains where every street is paved from here to, from sidewalk to sidewalk to driveway to driveway? I mean, come on, we moved into what was declared a semi-rural community. Are we giving this up for people who grew up in the city? I don't know. I choke at the notion of this becoming an urbanized area with multi-story apartments and all this other stuff, and sidewalks every which way. I mean, this is a little nuts.
I don't think anybody asked for apartments yet. We're meeting in two weeks, though.
Yeah, right, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Out of Lions, 154 Bear Ridge Road again. Just wanted to make two follow-up points. The first being the question about Nannahagan Road. I understand the concern there with that curve in there, but again, to go back to my earlier point where I believe that a lot of the car congestion on Ashland Avenue, which is really where the traffic going onto Nannahagan is feeding, is parents bringing their children to the school off of feeder roads that don't have adequate sidewalks to bring them into the village. Therefore, they're utilizing Ashland Avenue, which is one of a few places close to the elementary school where they can park. There's adequate parking there in the mornings. And so as a result of those parents then going, dropping off their children and getting back in those cars, that's creating the traffic that is feeding onto Nannahagan. I think it is a contributing factor, obviously there's timing and all that stuff. But the other thing, having been the person to go on record that I grew up in the city, I certainly don't want this to be Queens. There's a reason why I don't live in Queens. I love it up here, but there is a lot of area between Queens and Brooklyn and a street layout like that and what we're proposing here. What we're just proposing is a safer way for pedestrians to travel on that road. It's up to you to decide whether it's on the one side of the road or the other, and there's good arguments for that for either side. I'm happy. I just want to have a safe place that people can travel and those feeder streets. And yes, the village has to be concerned with the village residents, but there are plenty of us who have our children going to Pleasantville schools that are just outside the village. Yes, there is the number of houses on Robbins, but there's the number of houses on Colony Glen and Brook Manor and Lake Shore. And I see the traffic of the teenagers walking down those streets and across my front lawn area. It's an easement, it's not mine. I'm not trying to claim it or take a pass or anything like that. Just, I know it. I made the comment about putting out my orange cones and having someone, you know, swish it away a couple meetings back, true story. But, you know, people travel in front of my house in the coldest winter, walking their dogs. When it snows, I shovel a path through the snow towards my wall so that they're not out by the road where accidents could happen. I mean, there's a certain amount of civic responsibility that we all have to take. It's part of being in a community like Pleasantville that we want to build. And as I said, this isn't just a matter of today. It's something that will stay there and benefit those who live on all those feeder streets for generations to come. I won't be in my house for over 100 years. You know, I hope I live that long, but, you know, at some point, we all move on, and what we leave behind, the infrastructure of the town and what we improve benefits future folks. So something to bear in mind. Thank you all very much for your time.
And just keep in mind that the village taxpayers will bear the burden of anything that we do. The village taxpayers will bear that burden.
And as a Mount Pleasant resident, I would be perfectly happy bearing the risk.
To kick in something?
To have to go right up past my...
Well, we're going to Mr. Mead over there.
One step at a time.
I'm just saying, it's the village taxpayer that lives on Great Oak Lane or Grandview that will be paying for that, not the people on Colony Glen or anywhere else. Just, you know, that's a big burden for us. Because, you know, we have people coming to us saying, why are you doing that? Why are you raising my taxes to give people on Robbins Road and Colony Glen and everybody else sidewalks?
I am one of the most conservative individuals who live in me.
I don't know about that.
Trust me on that one.
Have I introduced myself?
Thank you all.
Roy, did you have another? It's nice to feel wanted, at least. 10:30, they still want me. Can I just, one question? I don't want to short-circuit anything, but if, we could probably release Bernie Adler from his bonding here, unless we had another question for him.
It was a question to might relate to Bernie's expertise. The thing that seems to be, one thing that we all do agree on is that there is a traffic problem. We don't all agree that we want sidewalks. I mean, if we say that that's a settled issue and all we want to know is when we're moving forward, there are people who don't want that result, so you know that, but that's the decision that's left in your hands. But are there things that could be done? I mean, it is, I know from hearings I've been at in the town of Mount Pleasant, Church Street and Bear Ridge Road is the kind of road that is supposed to not be available for through traffic and through trucks. It's a certain class of road that is not supposed to have through trucks. So those trucks that are going to Stanford are not supposed to be there. I was at a hearing in town of Mount Pleasant when they said, oh, no, that's all just local construction. And crazy as I am, I also followed a few trucks. They weren't at all local. There can't be that much...
Indiana.
There can't be that much construction on Bear Ridge. It's going somewhere. But between the town of Mount Pleasant and the village of Pleasantville, can there be some engagement to review whether the traffic code of the state of New York concerning a road like Bear Ridge, Church Street excludes through trucking and certain other kinds of traffic and allows you to enforce lower speed limits? And if, I mean, this may sound silly, but the things that slow people down, maybe you should stop maintaining the road. People will have more threat to their mufflers and they'll drive more slowly. But there might be some way to improve safety by doing that. And I don't know if it's costly or not, and I don't know whether a traffic consulting firm like yours can help us with a question like that.
Sorry to keep you a little bit late.
Not a problem.
Wait till the answer is just no.
In order to create a road which prohibits through trucking, you have to provide a truck route. So it has to, you have to sign this as a non-truck route and then make sure that there is another comparable, parallel route that will provide access from one end to the other.
That's 120. That's what I heard. That's what I heard.
I'm just giving you the input. In addition, you can't stop local delivery. So in order to make sure that this truck from Indiana is not just delivering a refrigerator around the corner, you have to follow it. And that sometimes becomes difficult.
Not for these guys. They seem to be doing it quite often.
But they don't wear a badge and carry a weapon.
Maybe we should hire them next time, too.
In order to cite them, you need to wear a badge and carry a weapon.
You wouldn't be aware of this, but Bedford Road, or may not be aware, within the villages, not a truck route, and Manville is. And we had a conversation with the police chief, maybe two or three months ago, as I recall, about that not being enforced and about the tremendous number of trucks on Bedford Road. And we had a report back, Mindy, Mayor, was it what, about a month ago, that some 40 tickets had been issued? And I was astounded, and I, you know, I said, I was wondering where all the trucks went. Because Bedford Road had an incredible number of trucks, has had, and you can just see by the kind of trucks they are. We're not talking about delivery vehicles. You know, there are all kinds of trucks, yeah.
Can I ask another question while you're there? I'm sorry, you finished?
Well, I was just going to suggest that I don't know what the alternative would be if there was limited truck traffic, maybe not no truck traffic, but limited truck traffic on Church Street. But how do you go about determining that a street, that the weight of vehicles on the street could be limited? Isn't that...
The weight is usually based on a bridge or faulty construction which prohibits more than three tons, 10 tons, that type of thing.
Does it have to be a physical characteristic? Or can you limit vehicle size by weight based on some of the characteristics?
You don't limit it by weight, you limit it by category, by no through trucking type of thing, trucking in general.
Okay. Can I ask, am I correct that we don't have the legal right to reduce the speed limit below 30?
Correct.
Okay, that's a statement.
Yes, but you could do it for school zones.
Right, although this is too far from school.
Too far from a school, unfortunately.
So it is not within our power to reduce the speed limit.
That's correct.
Further into your advice that doing so wouldn't be helpful anyway.
That's correct.
All right. So if there's any other comment from Mr. Adler...
Do you have a comment from Mr. Adler? Okay.
Elizabeth Brody, Lemon Robbins Road. In your recent study, you said 15 people were cited in four hours, all right? There are additional walkers in the early morning, after school, teens running, and all night and early evening. So is it more than 15 people, or is it less than 15 people? Plus an additional who would walk down to school with a sidewalk?
The scope that was laid out to us was to study the peak hours around the school times. And that's why we did that.
Okay.
Also...
Any more for Mr. Adler?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. We thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adler.
For your very responsibilities. Thanks, all.
Good job.
In retrospect to Ms., I think, either Ms. McDonald said it or Ms. Solomon said it. I grew up in Pleasantville. I went to the schools here, and they're all great, you know. But we did have a walkway path going down. It was like shaved gravel. It went so far. I mean, people like neglected it, and then it just, you know, disintegrated kind of thing. So there is a way, when there's a will, there's a way, they say. So it could be possibly done. You know, Mindy, you said to Corinne before about going through the aqueduct, walking to the Pleasantville.
Shh, who are we supposed to say that again?
Oh, sorry. I would like to do that now, but it says no trespassing. You know, aqueduct, private property. I went up the other day, I was taking a walk with my family up on Green Meadow. One woman came out of Green Meadow right next to Bill White, up the corner, because I was talking to Bill White, and she said, excuse me, do you live here? I said, no, I'm just walking. It's a private road. Don't you read that sign? So, I mean, if it's a private road, how are you supposed to...
You know, it's funny, we've been working a lot with the people in Green Meadow because they have a huge flooding and drainage issue. And we talked to them a lot about everybody walking through there, and they were like, we don't care who walks through here. They said the school kids walk through there all the time. It's the kids that drive through that they get upset with.
Well, this woman came out of nowhere and said...
I'm surprised to hear that because they're usually very walker-friendly there.
She walked right down, and she said, you see that sign on the thing? It said, no trespassing.
It's the cars. They are very upset because a lot of the kids cut through there, my son included, and they speed through there.
So in the category of historical interest and coming full circle, thank you Judy and Patty for the minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the village of Pleasantville, Monday, October 7, 1957. Mayor Buckout announced that the purpose of this meeting is to review several schematic plans that have been considered for the improvement of Church Street. plans that have been considered for the improvement of Church Street. And to obtain an expression of opinion from residents of Church Street, he thereupon described several scenes, schemes, as summarized by the village engineer in his letter of October 1. Consensus of opinion of the Church Street residents was that the beauty and rural character of Church Street should not be destroyed by the construction of a speedway. Several residents spoke in favor of keeping Church Street as it is, as a deterrent to speeding. They also stated that they had no objection to eliminating the bad curve at the upper end of the street. Mrs. Anna Orlando and Mr. Robert Romer objected to the proposed property takings on the grounds of which spoil the beauty of the street and devalue their properties. After considerable discussion of the expense involved and the reactions of the Church Street residents, Mayor Buckout proposed that the planned property takings, as defined in the right-of-way map prepared by the village engineer, be undertaken and that the village engineer be authorized to reconfigure the cost estimate in modified versions, providing 24 feet of pavement instead of 20 feet. Upon motion by trustee Casper and seconded by Mayor Buckout, the following resolution was offered. The village attorney is hereby authorized to proceed with negotiations for properties and easements in accordance with the right-of-way map approved, prices approved by the board. Resolve the village engineer is hereby authorized to prepare an estimate of cost for a 24-foot pavement with asphaltic concrete curbs, no sidewalks, from a point west of the Robinson property the village lied, including the necessary grading. That was a resolution that passed by a vote of three to two.
And where is he? He's right over by you, Roy. That mayor's picture should be right over by you, Buckle. That's about 57, around there, right?
Where our mailbox is, is where the road used to be. And the road moved towards the Athens House.
And took out their beautiful driveway. And their stone wall and their stone column.
Ah.
And great old Naples and these beautiful spruce trees that line the driveway.
What a shame. You wouldn't have wanted to know that.
And her brother's cut it up and put it in the party.
Did anyone have any further comment they wanted to make on this subject?
I have one.
All right.
You have to come up again. I'm sorry.
It's something that...
They cleared all the trees so you could get back home by now.
It's creeping over my feet today. I just have one thing that really concerns me. Church Street with all the cars and everything flying, speeding, so it's not only that, but as I'm sitting on our porch swings, watching all this go, people are on cell phones, the radios in the cars are blasting out so that you can't hear anything anyway. People are putting makeup on. Now they're texting, you know? And I just read, I just read that a lot of the accidents for trucks nowadays, that the truck drivers are texting while they're going down the highway.
The guy that ended up in the women's pool, he had two phones. He was texting on one and talking on the other.
Well, we were having a slice of pizza at Jerry's, at Jerry's the other day. We love to sit in the window and watch, because we like to count how many people are on their cell phones while they're driving their cars. One woman was on her cellphone, cigarette in the other hand, and a cup of coffee. I don't know where that went. But how was she, we couldn't figure out how she was driving her car.
Her knees.
Well, maybe. You know, but that is a big concern about Church Street with me and all this speeding, is that now people aren't just driving, they're doing everything else, too.
I mean, one thing, and somebody mentioned it, the police chief gives me a list, gives the board a list every month of standing posts that they've established to address certain issues. And as some of you have noticed, there are several standing posts at various cycles during the day and during the shifts that have people out on Church Street, Green Meadow, Robbins, trying to address these issues. And obviously, we don't have enough police officers to be doing this full-time, but on behalf of the residents, be aware that there is a clear effort to take action here. And on behalf of the miscreants, be aware that your chances of getting a ticket are higher than they were a while ago. So I thank you for that thought.
And the other thing is Mr. Adler here. We were gone when this whole thing was done on Church Street. I'm supposing that they had the cords going across, the electrical cords. Well, when you see those cords going, you slow down. You don't speed up or go the same speed that you're going. But when you see something like that in the road and you don't know if that's recording your speed, that you might be getting a ticket or what for. You know, I don't know how many people realize that those are counters.
Well, I hope you're right. That would suggest people are paying more attention than I give them.
Well, that would be good, except he doesn't have an accurate reading of the real...
In other words, you think it's worse even than the numbers he proposes?
Absolutely, I think it's worse.
Possibly right.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else to add?
We have to start on these resolutions before... You're just playing with us, huh?
We've exhausted all of you. We've outlasted you. Here's my thought, and everybody else can comment as they wish. My personal opinion is this, I'm not at this point able to say that the way forward is clear, but I do feel as though what's been presented and the speeding statistics and the traffic statistics in the Adler report suggest that we need to take some kind of action. What that action is, I think, is not absolutely clear, but I do think that there have been a number of steps that have been outlined here that may be reasonable and we will need to be exploring the right way to proceed in order to come to a decision. My personal opinion that is, in order to really assess what our options are, we need a better understanding of where the village right-of-way exists now and whether there are easements in place or not. And that it is reasonable to think that we ought to engage a surveyor, as we suggested some months ago, and then held in abeyance for this discussion, to actually give us a clear lay of the land and understand what we're dealing with. That connects, in a logical way, I think, with surveys that we're undertaking right now along Green Meadow and Hayes Hill as part of the water main project and the drainage project that some of you may have heard about and that I won't bore you with now. So that is my suggestion of the way forward, the next incremental step to set the table in a way that would allow us to come to a reasonable decision. Anybody else have a thought?
I'm sort of the last one to come to this argument. I'm just wondering why we think we need a survey if we don't think the right-of-ways are adequate? Is that, is it that we're short on right-of-ways?
The question I have is, we don't know where we have right-of-way and how much... Correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, am I right, that we don't know with certainty where the right-of-way is?
We don't know with certainty.
I mean, are there places where...
Does that mean we have a pretty darn good idea? What does that mean?
Yeah, well, yes, we have. I would say we know 95% of it.
Okay. I've not seen that. What is that?
Yeah, you have not. We found it in the basement today.
Judy, you go.
This refers to that meeting that you talked about with Mayor Buckout. This is actually the acquisition map for private property to straighten out the bend.
In 1957.
In 1957. And it's all surveyed. It has a bunch of 24 different properties affected by this.
So the right-of-way are pretty well...
And it has the types of takings, those that were temporary easements, those permanent easements, and those that were fee purchase easements, and how much the village was going to pay for them. It's a plan, so I don't know if it was the actual. It doesn't say this was it. That's the title of my...
All right. So we've never seen this, and maybe this puts us at third base or rounding home to gather that information. That's great.
Yeah, this is good.
It may be that...
We have a lot of points that a surveyor will need.
Right. It may be that a surveyor, a minor contract with a surveyor, could fill in the blanks. That strikes me as a reasonable way forward. Would, is there any comments by you?
You know, I just, all I have to say is, I think that, you know, before I came back on the board, I followed this on TV, and you all look really good in person. This is great. But, you know, I'm afraid that I'm getting almost to the point where I think we could yea or nay, make a decision on this. I mean, not tonight, but sometime soon, that, you know, we are at the point where, at least it seems to me, and I'm, you know, you guys have lived through this longer than me, where I think we run the risk of just sort of postponing it, postponing it, because we have two groups of really wonderful Pleasantville people who have opposing opinions. And in the nine years I served on the board, there were other times when, you know, I just had to choose, had to figure out what was the best for, you know, the village. And that may be different among us on the board. But, you know, I think in the interest of the village, I think we're getting close to the point where we should call the question. So, and I think we can. I mean, I think we're, I mean, if Mr. Adler hasn't given us adequate information, I just don't know who can...
I guess the question, I would say, is what is the question? And I mean, there have been lots of different discussions about sidewalk, about ADA compliant path, even about improving the existing pedestrian conditions without any physical improvements. And so, a question about whether the north side is, makes more sense for any of those possible options or the south side. At the point when we call the question, the question is, what are we proposing to do? And that's why I think the survey piece is...
If I could add to that, Peter, I think that with regard to the survey, I would hope that it would not fall short of giving us, if it's in fact necessary, to have a survey in order to make a decision. I think Brian was almost going to, well, before we get to doing surveys, you know, we just make a decision.
No, no. I mean, given that we have some kind of a survey here, I'm surprised we don't have, if we didn't have this, I'd be surprised. So I'm glad that we do have something like this. We have something on record. I just think we, you know, we, you know, a survey is another big step. Granted, we have a surveyor out there, we're working on Green Meadow, but I think we're 95% there. I think we can kind of get to the point where that's not germane to the ultimate decision that we have to make.
I wanted to parse that a little bit to raise the issue of whether we needed to go the survey route before making a decision, because I wasn't sure whether it would even be germane after some pretty, you know, I think there's some pretty, you know, pretty well-formed opinions and ideas that I've heard expressed from all you folks, I know. But if, while we're to look at survey information, I think that the one issue that came up that seemed a possibility for a workout that would have the most people happy would be the restoration potentially of the meandering path. And I would be curious, with regard to any additional survey information, where that meandering path was with regard to the existing right-of-way, and whether it was on private property or on the public right-of-way. And it may not be ADA compliant, but our consultant was suggesting that ADA compliance was not necessarily necessary going down to a three-foot walk, as long as you had to bump paths or bypasses. And...
I think we need advice from council on that issue.
Okay, certainly.
In addition to what you're saying.
So I would just like to, I think that one of the things that came up in a lot of this discussion was that putting in a concrete sidewalk, paralleling the curb with the ver, is that what it's called? Verge. That's a new term for me. I'll have to remember that one. I know, I know. Isn't that weird?
The benefits of public service and attendant services.
Yes. You know, I think that in my mind, that's one thing that could be done within the neighborhood that has the least amount of resistance with respect to providing some walking opportunity that's out of the right-of-way, informal, meandering around, and maybe not even hard-paved.
Well, I just think we can come to some, maybe, principled stand if we are opposed or in favor of providing walking access to that neighborhood. And then after that, if, you know, if we decide against that, then we don't have to get down to the actual engineering nuts and bolts. If the north side or the south side is a better place, I mean, I'm interested that the south side shows as much space as it does. I mean, I'm interested in all that, but we can wrangle with that, just till the cows come home. And some of us might be sort of fixed on whether we want the path or not. So why not just determine that if it's possible and if we can afford it, whether or not we want it? We sort of take it in steps, rather than try to, you know, get all the ducks in a row, get the whole thing ready to go, and then yes or no. Let's find out where we are. Not tonight. I'm not saying tonight. I'm just saying that in the relatively near future, we just make a commitment that we're going to either tell the neighbors that we're not going to go forward, or that we are, we're going to explore further in a way that we like the idea, we like in principle, we like the idea of connecting them in a walking way, and we want to move forward in that direction. And then we'll see where we are, without spending that much more money in the process.
I mean, you can take from my comments and my proposal that we get this survey data, and happily, maybe, that we have it or have almost all of it. You can take from that the assumption that I do think we should provide better walking access to this neighborhood. And that means I think we should take some action. I don't sit here to say, "I know what that action is," and I am very mindful of the concerns on both sides. And for Steve's comments, I think the best action is action that accommodates as many of the issues on both sides as we can. And so that goes to the question of, how can we do it? Obviously, the minimum action is to try to restore more of a verge in the manner some others have spoken once existed. The maximum action is a full-blown sidewalk. There are obviously some legal issues that come into play, but I think we've been confronted with a reasonable argument to take action. And certainly, as regards the speeding, an imperative to do what is reasonable to do to try to calm that traffic, recognizing that there isn't a magic wand and there isn't a means by which we can solve a problem that in significant part is not of our own making through traffic headed in another direction, not particularly focused on the life of Pleasantvilleans. But that's where I am on it. The question of how to balance the needs of these two differing opinions comes to the art of it, which is to say, "Hey, is there a way to do this that preserves a rural sense, that provides access in most conditions in most seasons in the way walkers would like to have?" That's where I am, and that's why, that's why I feel, looking at that map with whatever needs to be added to it, is the next step for me.
I would just second what Mr. Lyons said about the walking path along, I don't know what highway that is, Scotts Glen and Pound Ridge, which looks a lot like what something there could look like. And you should go look, drive up there and take a look at that. It's actually pretty interesting. They've had to tackle some of the same problems that we would have to tackle on Church Street. And it actually looks quite rural and quite protected. I'm not saying that we could afford that. I mean, to me, look, the other thing I have to say is, I was also on the board when we kind of thought about doing this before, and the bottom line was, we just couldn't afford it. That's where it happened. And it may be that that's what happens here. I mean, we're, these are difficult times, and certainly difficult times for taxpayers. And while safety is not, you know, non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming, safety is safety, still, you know, we could make, as somebody said, we could make these arguments all over the village, you know, safety arguments. And ultimately, you know, what we're trying to do is maintain a balanced village, people who can afford to live here and not have to move out because the taxes are too high. You can make the argument that that point is already, you know, we're already there and, you know, the damage is already done on many fronts. Taxes are already very high. But be that as it may, we have to really watch that and yet, you know, look after these neighborhoods that have legitimate concerns for speeding and for pedestrian access. But in any case, I just think we are getting to the point where we need to draw the line and say where we stand and call the question, so.
No, I agree with that, and I think that we need information at that session from council, we need some information about what we have on record, and then we can, we can do an up or down vote, I think. But, you know, I think Jonathan should be here. And, you know, we could do that, absolutely, without going forward with spending more money. Decide at that point if it's yea or nay on a majority.
So what do you think about this survey issue?
I want to see what we have. I want advice from council. Yeah. And get it for next week, and we can take a look at it.
See, one issue you may have, if Mr. Adler is recommending this three-foot verge, which is basically the space between the travelway and the beginning of the sidewalk.
Right.
That means that the sidewalk is going to have to be pushed back even further from Church Street, then you're probably be going on to a number of private properties. And if you decide to do that, hopefully, all the property owners would give an easement to the town, to the village for the sidewalk. But if you get one or more property owners who refuse to, who feel for whatever reason they don't want a pathway or a sidewalk, you might be facing the issue about whether you'd have to condemn an easement.
Well, and then we would also face the question that I don't think there's a single answer to. a single answer to, of whether the three-foot verge is a requirement or whether it's a goal, right?
Well, but the three-foot verge is, allows it to be a winter walking path.
A safety, yeah, you could, the snow removal.
Three feet all the way, any more than it has to be five feet all the way.
The other question, I mean, the other question that's been kicked around at various points was whether anyone would really use it in the winter anyway, and then it raises the question of, is there a means by which we could have a path, whatever it may be, that was not subject to the requirement for a typical sidewalk and didn't require homeowners to shovel it, based on the notion that nobody's much going to walk there anyway? Now, the reality is, I trust people do walk in snowy conditions, and, you know, that may engage another issue further. There would be people in the village who, who are subject to some fairly heavy burdens in the winter to deal with snow shoveling, who would doubtless take offense at the notion that they're responsible for it and somebody else isn't. So, I mean, those are issues that would certainly arise. But if I, I certainly recall some people saying that they felt a three-season path was addressing most of the concern of the proponents of the sidewalk. And so, you know, I don't think we've come to a conclusion that it's clear that there is a reasonable way to say, okay, you don't have to shovel your walk, but maybe there is.
We're not getting anything comfort in the village, and the conditions were created by the village when Church Street was moved, actually, and our property then was moved into Church Street. And I worry about ice forming the sidewalks. Difficult enough for us to clear the sidewalk, that long stretch on outside, but then if water runs on it and ice forms, how will we ever clear it, even clear ice, especially the snow clouds are continuing to dump the snow onto that area, and we're told we may not be snow to the street.
Well, you know, again, it goes to the question, I, you didn't hear all of that probably at home, but Ruth McDonald commented that there are drainage issues on her side of the street and her neighborhood, in her area, when her property is in some places lower than the street, and if ice forms on a sidewalk or path, it would be difficult or perhaps impossible to keep it clear over a period of the winter. Others have the same concern. So, you know, again, it goes to the question in my mind of, what is reasonable to build that would address most of the concerns in the least problematic way and with the least overall cost, not only today, but to everybody going forward? I mean, one of the struggles we confront, all of us who have sat in these chairs, is the reality that everybody wants various things and for perfectly understandable reasons, and, and over a period of time, it builds up the cost of living here to a level that comes close to crisis sometimes. And, you know, certainly there are expectations of what government can and will and should provide that are different from what existed 50 years ago, and certainly different from what existed 100 years ago. And we're always trying to balance partly art, partly science, the question of, you know, how have conditions changed in ways that ought to make us change with them? The fact that we've always done it a certain way doesn't mean that's the way we should do it going forward. So, you know, these are exactly those kinds of questions. Obviously, people have been talking about how to walk on Church Street and traffic on Church Street and speeding on Church Street for a long time. There isn't a magic wand, but I do feel as though we're confronted with enough options on the table that we can make some incremental progress. I don't, I mean, perhaps goes back to the old adage that, you know, if every, if, if nobody's happy, you've struck a good compromise. I hope we can do better than that, but I do think there is clearly some movement we could take here. What it is, I'm not sure.
Certain areas, of course, are green to come out.
Right, right.
And you have to build on that.
Exactly, I agree. We should focus on that and build there. So, I mean, all of you are subject to the troubles associated with the traffic and the speeding. And that alone is a piece of action that, you know, we need to do what we can do about. We are doing it now with increased enforcement, but clearly there are some other steps we could consider, so.
Excuse me, Mayor, sure. I trust that for the sake of resolution, pretty important and significant details are not overlooked regarding the property owners close to Broadway and the like. There are entrances that we could easily floss over and the door, so, well, okay, we need a sidewalk, but on the other hand, what will be the consequences of the actions of the village regarding individual property owners too?
Well, again, those are significant issues, and that, part of the question of who's most affected and how is going to get clarified by taking a look at this survey data and what land we actually have. As you know, others, people have tossed out the idea that Green Meadow is an alternative route, and if we could get pedestrians down as far as Green Meadow in some better protected manner, perhaps they could walk in Green Meadow from there, recognizing that the stretch from Green Meadow to Broadway is, presents some of the hardest challenges on both sides of the street. You know, whether that's a reasonable solution, a number of people have said to me, no, that isn't. Others have said, hey, maybe that makes sense. Some of the people that are out there and recognize, as you all know, that Green Meadow is at the moment a private road, and there are issues engendered there too, so. So I've said what I think we should do, and I've said what I think I'm capable of saying at the moment, which is, I do feel we need to take some action, and I can't, I'm mindful of the issues on both sides. I think that there is a way to improve this situation without tragic consequences, you know, to the environment, and I feel as though the survey data will give us the next step. So, that's my take on it.
So let's move on.
You guys open to that?
We've all said what.
Okay, so. All right, so here's what we'll do. We'll reconvene this discussion, and it'll be on the agenda in two weeks at our, at our next meeting, which is about the 24th.
Yep.
At which point, we will have looked this over and made this available to any of you guys, if you're interested in it. Patty, can we get, get a few copies made if, if some other people would like to see this?
I have a few extra tonight, if anybody wants.
Okay.
The copies tonight, and then.
We haven't seen it yet, so feel free.
We also met the survey.
The survey.
I thought you meant the Adler report.
No, everybody has the Adler report, I think. If anyone doesn't, they're welcome to it.
I have one of these, but I'll get more.
All right, if you could just get a few copies, it's costly to get a lot, but if you could kind of share them on both sides of the aisle, so to speak.
It's fine. It doesn't say much, you know, it's.
All right.
It's published information.
Right, it's fine.
I thank you all. We will see doubtless many of you in two weeks, and there may be some communication in the meantime, in which case, feel free to let us know anything that comes up that you want to add to the picture. And you are more than welcome to stay while we go through our dry as dust resolutions. We invite you to do so.
If necessary.
That's why I'm rushing you.
All right.
Mr. Lopez.
Are you ready for tapes?
Do we need Joel?
No, I think we're. Joel's history.
History, thank you.
You know the questions I keep asking. Are we going to be able to get some clarification?
What about on ADA?
ADA, if a path is, if we can put a path in.
Have you, have you seen him? I did a memo on February 29th.
Yeah, I couldn't, I probably have that in my, in my, I'll relook at that. If not, I'll get it, it's February 29th.
And Joel, the attorney for the Sims subdivision on Guyan was here tonight. What's his name?
Holden.
Yes. And they are anxious that we take some action, so.
Well, there's a possible, well, see, again, as I mentioned to you earlier today, I had revealed a proposed construction easement for if and when the vacant parcel is ever sold.
We're still on TV here, so.
But I have not looked at that issue, and I wasn't aware until you mentioned it to me about the Board of Trustees has to consent.
Right. Okay, so take a look at that. I think Holden is going to call you tomorrow, and I think his goal is that we could take some action if we think it's appropriate to, two weeks from now.
Well, except it's my understanding the planning board, well, the planning commission will only act if the vacant parcel is sold.
Is that the resolution of the planning commission?
In other words, the planning commission, I think, approved the subdivision.
Yes.
Okay. But they wanted an easement between the two parcels, but the easement would only go into effect if the two parcels are in separate ownership.
I see, which at the moment, they are not.
Right now, they're in single ownership, but that's different than the issue about the deed restriction. And Judy, did you send the deed?
Excuse me?
Did you send the deed to me?
Yes.
Well, whatever. We should pursue that, and I think the attorney's going to call you. All right.
And thank you very much, Joel, for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you Mrs. Russo?
Sure.
Welcome. Did you want to address this on, on this matter? We're still in televised meeting, we're about to go into our resolutions. You're welcome to comment now if you want to.
Yes, you're welcome. You want another? No? All right, so, I'll see, who came with Anthony?
You don't have to, it's up to you.
All right, well, I have two issues.
You have to say your name and your address.
My name is Kathleen Russo, I live on Goldwood Lane in Pleasantville. I recently had been active in several zoning board meetings because a property adjacent to mine went before the board for variance, and I'm quoting from the Zoning Board of Appeals for April 30th, and they wanted to basically change the zoning or ask for a variance so that a house that was two and a half stories would now be three and a half stories. And they said that the only way to eliminate the bottom story, if the variance was not granted, would be to raise the topography all around the house. Mr. Tancredi, who's the architect for this project, said that the estimated cost would be between $118,000 and $140,000 to build retaining walls, and it would cause drainage problems. He said that due to the hill, only half the basement is visible, but if new retaining walls were built, would bring the grade up and eliminate the bottom story. He then went on to say that he believed that the raised elevation would make the house look like it was sitting up on a pedestal. There were two board meetings in April and May that discussed this, and we, the neighbors were not able to make an agreement, to make, come to an agreement regarding the appropriate shrubbery to hide this and make it so that it wouldn't be as visible as it is now. So, the property owners at 119 Pears decided that they would build these retaining walls for $118,000 to $140,000. I then went on the website, Village of Pleasantville, to do a tax search, to see what the status was of these people, were up to date with their property taxes. And low and behold, they were not. And to the tune of about $11,000, and these people bought the property in September of 2005. On September, on July 24th, I contacted the town in Mount Pleasant, and I asked if there was a lien on the property for the town taxes and the school taxes. And it turns out that these people had a lien for, I believe, a little bit over $11,000. So now we're talking over $20,000 in property taxes that are in arrears, and they're going to spend $120,000 on a retaining wall alone, and that doesn't include any amount of money in terms of the addition. And I feel that they, they basically have circumvented the zoning laws, which say 30 feet or two and a half stories, whichever is more restrictive, not take your pick, which is how sometimes it's interpreted, all right? So, it's basically smoke and mirrors. As Mr. Kraus had stated in, I believe it was the May meeting, that, you know, they could do this if they brought in a lot of dirt. And you know what? That's exactly what they're doing. They're bringing in a lot of dirt, some of these walls are between three feet and six and a half feet. And frankly, I don't understand how they're allowed to circumvent the zoning rules. The second issue, which is really pressing, is I don't understand how people who cannot afford or choose not to pay their property taxes are able to avail themselves of the village services. I think you have to pay to play, and I think that you really need to be up to date on all your taxes, all three components of the taxes, before a building permit is issued to you, before a certificate of occupancy is issued to you. And I don't think that it's a stretch to ask that the building department, that the secretary or whoever is responsible there, make sure that these people are compliant. And as again, you know, you've spoken about the tax burdens. Right now, they're probably, the property taxes on this property at 119 Pears Drive are probably about $20,000. Has anybody figured out how much they're going to be once they have all these additions? And do you really think that these people are going to be able to pay for it? If you look at the payment, their payment history, it's less than stellar. And I really just, I think that this is going to be a difficult property to sell if it should go into foreclosure, and I really don't see how, based on past performance, this can be allowed to go forward. I realize that.
Do we have any?
Do you have more to say, or?
I'm urging the board to immediately, like tonight, adapt a resolution that says you have to be up to date in your village, town, and school taxes before you are able to apply for a variance, a building permit, or you're given a certificate of occupancy.
All right, let me unpack that a little bit. You and I had a conversation about this once before, I think you've talked to Patty. The first part of it is the decision of the zoning board, which you feel.
No, actually, it's Mr. Testa's.
Interpretation of the zoning code.
Right.
The question of adjusting the grade on the lot in order to fulfill the requirements, that is a step that is frequently taken as people regrade their lot, and if you have, if you believe that Mr. Testa's decision on that is wrong, you can challenge that.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
I have thought of that. That's in Article 78, which I would need to hire an attorney to go to New, and go to Westchester County Court. I think it's ironic that I've lived in this village for 31 years. My husband and I have been property owners, we paid our taxes for 31 years. Now, I would have to hire an attorney to go to Westchester County Court to basically start proceedings against the village that I pay taxes for, to challenge something, a ruling that's made that favors somebody who has not paid their taxes.
All right, but recognize that Mike Testa, Mike Testa is the building inspector, and he believes he has interpreted the code correctly. It's not, it's not our job, nor is it our right, to usurp his authority as the building inspector to decide that. And, I mean, obviously, if, if we lacked confidence in Mike's judgment over a period of time, we'd address it, and that certainly has not been the case, but I can't comment on the merits of this, I don't know what the merits are.
Okay.
But Mike thinks he's done the right thing. He's not trying to, you know, give somebody something they don't deserve, I'm quite sure. So, you know, we're talking about a seasoned, longstanding building inspector who believes that he has fulfilled the requirements of the zoning law. If there's some aspect of the zoning law you wish were different, that would be our call to think about rewriting it.
Well, that would be what I would suggest that you do.
So that people couldn't change the grade, you mean?
So, well, when we had this discussion of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I don't have the minutes yet, but basically, other people questioned them, and they were told that, you know, there really is no limit to how much you can change the grade. I mean, you know, and they took it to the point of, well, could be 30 feet, you know, could you, you know, cover up like three stories and have a five-story building? You know, they really, and that's not my point, but, you know, it really does seem to me that if you can bring in dirt and put up walls, you can, you know, and change a basement to a cellar, and now you've got, the end result is that I've got a three and a half story house in my backyard, okay, because it's on a flag lot. And that's another thing that, you know, really is sort of skews the whole thing, is that it's like this, and then it has a rectangular piece.
I mean, I just, I understand your frustration. We unfortunately are not the board that either made the decision or the Board of Appeal, if you want to challenge it, on that subject. But let's move to the second subject, and that is, this is a property owner who is behind in taxes but has still gone through this process. And so, when this issue arose, we looked at the code and we sought advice of the village attorney. There is nothing in our code that says you can't apply for a variance and get a permit to undertake a project if you're behind in your taxes. Honestly, I, none of us are aware of it ever having happened before, and so, you learn something every day. I think that we had a work session discussion about it, and the board in general is, is sympathetic to your argument, that, you know, it seems kind of unreasonable to be, to be behind in your taxes and yet proposing to make a big change in your property. So, we, we. So, we actually have been discussing and will be discussing further in the next week or two, a change in our code or simply a resolution that establishes the rule that you would have to be up to date in your taxes. But a couple of things arise. The first is, I believe, although I can't speak with absolute certainty, that the only tax bill we have any right to look at is the village tax bill. And the fact that someone is in arrears on their, on their school tax bill or their county tax bill, I'm afraid is a piece of the picture that we would not be entitled to take into account. That wouldn't be a lot different from your being in debt to anybody else. It's not a debt to us, and therefore, I'm guessing, although I don't have certainty on it, and we certainly asked the question, that our code could only, our resolution could only say, "We're going to look at your village taxes." The other piece of that is, we are mindful of the, of one problem that we don't want to create inadvertently, and that is that there are circumstances when people end up in financial distress and get behind in their payments and decide that they need to sell their property in order to pay their debts and move on in a different way. And some of those people, especially people who've lived in a house for a long time, find that the new requirements for mortgages and the like for new buyers require a more thorough due diligence than used to be the case, and people end up having to come back to boards to legalize some existing condition, a deck built in the 1950s, whatever it might be. So, I, the one piece of it we were, are seeking to grapple with is whether we could write a code that does not deprive someone who's seeking to sell their house in order to pay these debts from doing so, and, and make a distinction in that resolution from another kind of project which, you know, would expand the house or whatever it might be. So, that's what we're working on.
Okay. What about, not just for the variance, not just for the building permit, but also for the certificate of occupancy? Because this, this way, this way, it ensures that people are compliant through the process.
I, we'd have to ask for the opinion of the village attorney about whether we could trigger all of those pieces of it.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I can say that whatever we would do, I think, could not, certainly, the applicant you described is already through the gate, and I'm not at all certain that we could...
They don't have a certificate yet.
It's possible that if we could establish a certificate of occupancy requirement, that that might apply. I don't know if it would or not, and whether that makes sense. You know, I, I understand your frustration in this current situation, and it raises a point that honestly, I doubt this board or any board before us has ever considered, but we ought not to craft a resolution that's specific to this problem, but to the broader philosophical question, and that's what we're grappling with.
Thank you for considering this. I believe, as a, as a property owner and homeowner in Pleasantville, I hope that you make this decision quickly and that it's in effect ASAP.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Sorry about that, yeah.
I guess we're, we're on a marathon night tonight. All of you watching who are still out there, here's your chance for the approval of the pre-check register.
Steve. Resolved that pre-check registered dated August 10th, 2009, covering check numbers 64067 to 64237, has been reviewed and they are hereby approved as listed below. General Fund, $270,000, 132 and 02. Mislandous Revolving Fund, $169.63. Water Fund, $24,530,74. Capital Fund, $30,181.59. Refuge Fund, $57,303.55. Pool Fund, $15,299.99. Trusted Agency, $1,366.65, for a total of $398,984.17.
Second.
Ryan seconded it already.
Patty, included in this check warrant are, are three rent checks for the Clinton Street Center, which I think were late in arriving.
We were not due.
You know, I understand that, but I had a conversation today with Virginia, and I guess there were some other bills. This is just the rent bill. It's not...
How much is this?
They're all $5,005.33.
That's just the rent.
Okay, fine. So, that's fine, because there were some other bills that she was wanting to get more backup on for, for reimbursement. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. All right.
Uh, resolve...
Go ahead.
Okay, do you want an update?
We'll get it after.
Are we gonna, I just want, ask the chief if I'm gonna be able to get home tonight.
Can the chief call the phone and give us an update?
Yeah, why doesn't he call us?
It's all...
Good idea.
Let's go ahead with the minutes.
All right, resolved that the Board of Trustees reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, July 20th, 2009, and they are hereby approved.
Second. Any comments or corrections?
No, and I read them.
No. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the proposal with Hillman and Miley, 222 Mamaroneck Avenue, White Plains, for weatherproofing the recreation center as per the terms set forth in their proposal letter dated July 9th, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, just for benefit of those who may still be watching, it's a contract of $9,500 for the design and documents and $2,500 for construction review of a series of, of steps we need to take for the, for the rec center in order to, the old rec center, the old, the old library hall on Great Oak Lane in Bedford, in order to stabilize it and secure it from further damage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Steve.
That the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a proposal with Software Consulting Services Inc., 54 Elizabeth Street, Red Hook, New York, for a property assessment system software package as per the terms set forth in their proposal dated June 26th, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so that discussion we had earlier in work session with the assessor, Jim Timmings, is that this software, which at its maximum looks like it might cost an initial investment of something like $18,000 with an annual support fee of $2,300, would align us with the town of Mount Pleasant and allow us to share data much more freely. There was some discussion with the assessor about the possibility of achieving this at somewhat lower rate and also knocking out a couple of the packages that were included in the original proposal. So, I propose that we approve this, subject to the final negotiation done by the village administrator with the assistance of the assessor. The mover accepting that?
Yes. Yes, yes.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
I know, we are. I, I just thought this next resolution was put aside.
Resolution 158, which was an authorization to sign a license agreement with Lucy's Martini Lounge, and that is not a license to buy martinis. It turns out that Lucy...
Then I disapprove.
Has an easement, needs an easement for an existing wall that's slightly on our property. That is being tabled.
Right, I thought so.
Based on the advice of council.
Steve, couldn't give me that?
So, you get 159.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement with Westchester County Department of Planning for a CDBG grant entitled Roselle Park Neighborhood Improvement Project in the amount of $260,934.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe this?
Uh, yes, this isn't new. This is just a revised agreement. If you recall, the county gave us this money back in 2007. Our project got scoped and designed in 2008 and '09, then the county suspended the funding, and our original agreement expired.
Right.
So, what they have done for us, since they've settled that litigation now, it'll be a big story in the paper today and tomorrow about this litigation that suspended this block grant program, but they are renewing all of their agreements. So, this is the money for our traffic signalization project at Bedford Road and Pleasantville Road that the county committed to.
Great.
Basically what was...
Great, wonderful.
Yeah.
On on again, off again.
It is, but it's...
It is a match, though.
Well, we have it.
We, we kick in $260...
We put in more, actually.
Three twenty.
Three hundred and fifty.
Fifty, so it's three twenty. That we were even lower.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 160.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Clark Street residents to hold a block party on Saturday, September 5th, 2009, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., that will be a lively party.
That's a great party.
Do they mean 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
Yes, they do. They do it, they do that every year.
All right, you go, guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 161.
Steve. I resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby appoints Eli Garrison as a part-time peace officer for the Justice Court at a salary of $20 per hour effective August 10th, 2009.
Second. Eli Garrison is our new court officer. We've been required by the Office of Court Administration in Albany to have a metal detector for entry to the court, and that requires a peace officer to staff the, to staff the metal detector and to bar entry to someone who might file it. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we think of anything else to say tonight?
No, no.
Mr. Mayor, your car got hit by a tree limb.
It did?
I had to tell you the bad news in front of your constituents here.
Right out here?
This is hard work. Yeah, and you're not going to be able to take it away because there's wires on it tonight.
My car's out front, too. My, my car's right next to his car.
And yours got hit, too?
I needed a ride home.
That was another Oldsmobile next to it.
No, I'm the CRV.
Maybe they missed, there's a little problem down the block, so I'll take any of you home that need to get home.
We'll walk.
Really bad.
I'm saddened to hear that.
His car is definitely hit.
Yeah, there's not much damage according to the chief right now, but he can't really see very well. But there's a limb on it with wires, so you may need a ride home.
All right, well, we'll address that problem again.
If I can get one car out, I'll give you a ride.
Do you remember the fire parade when the chief told me that a tree fell on my house? The, I was on the reviewing stand of the fire parade, and the chief came up and said, "A tree's fallen on your house. The family's okay."
Did anybody hear it?
Oh, sorry. There was a car next to the mayor's that got hit pretty hard.
A car next to the mayor?
We'll find out who that is.
So, if you're driving an Oldsmobile, license number CDW...
It's an Oldsmobile?
I think that's what the chief said.
Not a CRV?
Okay.
I think he said Oldsmobile.
It was an Oldsmobile, but it's here.
All right, can we stop? Can we stop that? One of the things we had posted was continuation of the public hearing on the local law, banning Chapter 173 vehicles and traffic regarding limited parking on West Cora Avenue, it being 11:30, and our, having skipped over it. We're, can we have a motion to...
Open.
No, to, to adjourn that and to continue it at the next meeting, Monday, August 24th?
So moved.
Second. Motion approved. I think we've said enough.
Good night.
I deeply appreciate your interest, if you are still there. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Don't get nervous.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Discussion, see you next week.